Budgets.
I was hoping to get it like all in order one year, like so it was easy. Fifty-four. So.
The recreation budget is up 1.91 percent for the general fund. It is mainly in salaries.
Excuse me.
With an increase in general supplies of about a hundred dollars.
Mr. Nazaro, Councilor Nazaro, sorry.
What is Jim Hilton's Abe Lincoln back then, last day?
January fifteenth? First.
How many years have you served, Jim? Twenty-seven and a half years in that position. So first of all, thank you for your service of the town. Flip side of that is, if we're hiring a new person who is going to be in at least that position, like one day from January twenty-second, why is the salary going up?
Salary's going up not because of pay increases. This is a reflection of the merit page, merit pool distribution from last year.
It's probably, I'm sorry, I asked the question incorrectly. Why isn't like the base salary for that position going down from someone that's been there for thirty years to someone that's kind of been there for one day?
Because you don't know who we're hiring. We may hire somebody who hasn't much experience. And in that situation, you hire somebody at the same level or close to it.
So we're potentially going to hire someone that's been in the job thirty, a job similar to this thirty years?
You could, yes. I mean, we don't know who we're hiring yet. We don't know the resumes.
How much, I apologize, how much is it going up? Help me here.
Two percent. And that purely is, again, that's just a reflection of the merit.
So it's like eight grand or nine grand, is that, I apologize. Was the budget?
Three grand.
Okay, I'm sorry. Trying to follow what we're. Full-time salaries, that's everybody.
Three grand from this year, eleven grand from the year before. From the year we actually, we just finished.
And the eleven was to increase, it was the senior citizen director.
It was that position?
Yeah.
Yeah. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I understand. And there may be savings in the following year. But we just don't know who we're hiring yet.
Okay.
It's a budget, it's not an offer, correct?
Correct, I'm sorry?
It's a budget, it's not an offer.
Right. Absolutely.
Right at the top. Okay, that's what I was looking at.
It's total salaries, the problem is that there's not.
Yeah, I'm looking at total salaries, is there actually, what is, I apologize, but what is, yeah, what is the salary of the person who runs the department, please, Steve? I just want.
Matt, do you have that?
It's about sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Okay, and what are you penciling in for the next person, please?
The same amount. Which doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. So you're keeping at about sixty-odd grand, so just, oh. Is that, do we know roughly the salary of most recreation? I mean, is there a norms quasi? You did a synopses, Matt, a few years ago on salaries around here. Is our recreation salary in line? I'm assuming it is.
It is.
Is it higher, lower, mid, same, what?
He actually is following where he should sit for the years of service and the size of organization that we have.
So it's right on.
So you would expect him to be in the upper end of the pay range for a organization of this size?
So it is, okay. So it's on the upper end. I might recommend, you know, maybe breaking it out. Because I thought we broke out different departments, no?
No, no, this, we haven't changed anything in the budget.
Okay, alright.
Matt, you understood my question, all right?
Yeah, I understood your question.
Does it make sense? Or am I off, am I completely off-mart?
It does, but I think that Steve made a very valid point. We don't know the person that we're going to hire.
Okay.
I apologize, Councilor Boden, I'm sorry.
Lot of words.
Is there considerations taken in for cost of living increases? All that stuff?
Now, we distribute that through the merit pool, which you'll see later in the human resources department. We do everything by, any pay increase by merit. That's why you're seeing a two percent. We distributed the merit pool last year. So the two percent is actually a reflection of what we changed the salaries this year.
Okay, thank you.
There is a cost of living, there is an increase in the collective bargaining unit.
Right.
Just to cut, I'm sorry, I apologize. You good? Postage, Steve. It was three-hundred and thirty-seven. We budgeted fifteen, we're budgeting fifteen again. Is there a reason? I'm assuming that you didn't mail something out, but I'm going to ask anyway. What's the?
Actually, we went from the, we didn't use the postage in one fiscal year. We were just delayed on mailing, so, but we had already put the money into the postal account. And so it didn't hit in last year's fiscal year, it actually hit the year before, just because of when the mailing went out. So we actually saved money last year. But I put in the same amount. But because of, at that time, we were switching to one brochure, we may not use that entire mailing again. I just flatlined it, but there is a good chance that we won't use that again. And it's not really mine, I don't mind if ever used, we can just keep it in our back to account anyways. They didn't want it anticipated, so I just kept it flatline.
Okay. Steve, can you explain?
Somebody turn their phones off. Let's make sure we have all our phones off.
Steve, can you explain, like, I'm looking at page fifty-five from fifty-four. They're both recreation, right? So why does it say part-time salaries is the second column up top? And then it says part-time salaries?
Two different types of salaries. Part-time salaries in general fund is staffing for the full year. Part-time salaries for the revolving fund is summer staff.
You might want to put revolving fund then in there.
It does.
Oh, it does, we're.
It's right in the top left.
Oh, that's, so this whole column is revolving, I apologize.
Yeah, it's two different budgets, yeah.
Okay, I haven't seen anything like this in a while. Focus maybe. So part-time's a hundred thousand, and you're budgeting down? You spent ninety-seven, so it was about the same?
Yep.
And you're budgeting up to?
Hundred-and-forty-two. And that's all, revolving fund is all offset a hundred percent by revenue.
So explain something, because I just want to understand it. If the original budget was one-twenty-four, is we just not through the year, obviously?
Correct.
Okay.
And if we have more programs?
Doesn't that seem like a big jump? I'm just.
No, we're increasing programming, and it's all paid by fees. This isn't through taxation. And if we don't have the fees?
You won't.
We don't hire the people. But we have to budget for what we anticipate.
I'd like to see the revolving fund go up, that means we're doing more.
Right.
Right. It allows for us to grow, which is something we haven't had before. So it's very nice knowing that if somebody walks in the door who can be a great instructor and make money for the recreation department, and I didn't originally put that in the budget in the general fund, it makes a difference. Hello.
Councilor Thompson.
I'm going to go back to the, under the general funds, Steve, the postage line item?
Yep.
Where that's high, we haven't spent it, but we do have a postage line item in the revolving fund. I know it's too different, but if really push came to shove, could we trim the one in the general fund by a thousand dollars?
About half.
I can trim it by eight-hundred.
Okay.
We keep in records.
Yep, I've got it. Matt, you got it too?
We have that hedge in the other one that I'm worrying if we.
Yeah.
I don't want to cripple you on it and whatever, but we're just looking at the numbers here.
Okay. Cool.
All good? Councilor.
In the general fund, is that what?
Yeah.
So it'll go down to eight-hundred and the, down eight-hundred, so at least seven-hundred in that.
Yep.
Councilor Boden.
Guess what is, what's the difference in general versus revolving? If you can drop the postage down by that much, what is it? How is it, how is it being used, I guess?
It's more marketing materials. So a lot of the postage that's used in the revolving account would be something that's directly reflective of a program that we're driving revenue from. Of course, the postage in the.
It's summer, like the.
Is more administrative, and there's a lot of information that goes in our brochure that isn't necessarily a revenue-driven. The brochure is a lot of community information and a lot of revenue, so that's how we kind of.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Quick question.
Councilor Weinstein.
So that includes the brochure, and it, does it include senior center, the sunrise sunset?
Yes, the center, mailings. That, you'll see sunrise sunset, she can utilize the postage in the general fund. As long as it's not a rent-revenue generating event, those usually are offset by the calling.
On the revolving end, it says bus trips, we budgeted for sixteen, thirty-six, and the actual expenditure was sixty-nine. Correct? Does that mean we received sixty-nine? Okay, is that a fact?
Yes.
We ran a large.
No, that's great, but I mean, you got paid sixty-nine, okay.
Yes.
And.
Overall, the revolving fund, the balance, the cash balance is up a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So they're bringing in more revenue than they're actually spending out.
And, and under equipment, it says it was two thousand, it's basically eleven, right? But I'm looking at the next year and the next year, and you're basically leaving everything flat. And if, I'm just wondering, in other words, you're not saying, okay, so we drove seventy grand or whatever it's going to be for the bus trips. So for eighteen, now that we've got a year under our belt to really see it, we're going to say we're going to go to fifty or sixty. You're going to still keep it at, well, I guess you did keep it at fifty. But you're not going to keep it flat at sixty-nine or whatever?
Well, we probably won't be, in anticipation, we won't be doing such a large trip. That was a very significant trip. It cost the twenty-six thousand dollars to run, but we made it up and there was a net profit for that. We have talked about it, it'll probably be a two-day trip. And then there's also a lease amount in there. So even though for this current year we're at thirty-six, we spent sixty-nine, I'm anticipating around fifty because of the growth of the senior sunrise sunset. There's much more trips going on, and we make sure we have the, it in there. Again, we won't spend it unless we are driving a revenue to cover it.
So, so maybe I'm missing it, but I really don't care, I'm going to ask anyway. If, if the revolving is making a hundred grand, as you said. So this year we budgeted one-ninety-nine, the actual expenditure was two-forty. Where is it reflected in any of these numbers that we made a hundred?
It's in the revenue.
It's in the revenue, it's not, it's not in your budget package.
Okay.
It's in the budget, but not, it's in the revenue page at the beginning, we.
That's probably the only one that would be helpful to see.
Again, we don't, government does not do budgeting like a business does, it doesn't show the, we have to do gross-based budgeting. So we can't, we have to show exactly, everything that we're going to expand, and then offset it on the revenue on the other side. So.
Cut you off.
No, it's okay.
So their hundred K revenue, for the cash balance being up, that is literally going into our revenue that we see against, like, by that revenue being higher, we don't have to tax as much.
No.
No, they keep it, don't they?
They keep it. It stays in their fund balance.
So it's literally just in the rec world?
Right.
It does not actually, it's not like the ambulance that's making money for like the town?
Never.
The purpose of the revolving fund is to take that hundred thousand dollars, plow it back into programs, and expand the offerings to the citizens.
Okay, that's great, I mean, but it just stays within rec, I just want to make sure you know that.
It's probably the only department that actually runs like a business. But you think of it that way. They get to, they have their revenue stay with them, and it offsets their expenses. Whereas the rest of us have to, when if we make a revenue, it goes into the general fund.
Is there ever a goal to make it tax-neutral?
Well, that would make it, that would be a start if they changed the.
That would be the, like, the ultimate plan. However, you would, the numbers wouldn't, we don't have enough revenue to offset the administrative costs at this point in time. What we do is, programming is all tax-neutral. Administration, except the senior center, is the only thing on taxes.
How much were we up last year? We're a hundred K this year, or at the end it's about sixteen. How much were we up at the end of fifteen?
Sixty-five thousand, I believe.
And that was the first year.
So it's trending in the right direction.
Absolutely.
Do we have, have we had any internal, like, town meetings from, between y'all, where there's any conversation about like, what percentage of this should go to decrease what we're pulling from the general fund for this? Versus how, what percentage goes into? Right now, it's a hundred percent going into like programming, which is fine. But at some point, there needs to be some strategy towards how you are.
We have, one of the things we started looking at are percentage of salaries coming from revolving. So it's not a hundred percent. Say, the senior director or another position will say, you know what? Twenty percent of that can now come from programming, because that's what they spend their time on. We're going to start withdrawing that from the revenues.
Yeah, so right now, it's like, I feel like, the analogy I'm thinking in the private sector would be, because this is the closest to a business, like, if you had a pharmaceutical company that, like, was plowing a hundred percent of its profits into R and D.
Yeah.
That's funny, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
And going into debt on the other side to keep things running.
It does subsidize some of the programs, the community events that we no longer put in the general fund. For example, the Halloween Haunt, which is a huge community event, is, has no, there's no real revenue generated from that. So our, that revolving account subsidizes that event along the suspension.
Yeah, I think it's great, right? I don't want to see it like all go to offset, but I think there needs to be some strategy to like how, the fact that you're pulling revenue, awesome. There needs some strategy to like what, how do we use that?
And we are monitoring that, we have.
There's some, there's some behind-the-scenes discussions going on. What you're, what's being reflected in the current year budget is half of the senior center director is being paid out of the general fund, and the half is being paid out of revolving. Last year, a hundred percent was being paid out of the general fund.
Oh, perfect, okay, great.
Then they're also discussing what to do with the bus that they, that the rec center has, okay?
Who's they? Internally?
Internally, okay. So we have a bus that is starting to age, and what they're trying to do is make that bus be more active. They want it on the road every single day, generating revenue, okay? The problem is, they were so successful throughout the summer, they had more people than they had seats. So we had to lease a van for three months, okay? And what we're hoping is, that's going to expand and get larger. So I think what's going to happen with the revolving fund is they're going to buy a second bus, because it's
It's exciting.
Easy money.
I'll stop talking, I think it's exciting, I think it's great. I just wanted to see that there's a strategy behind that.
Some of the other profit is being, helping to subsidize some things on CIP, to bring down the CIP.
Right.
So I have earmarked some of that money for those types of projects. So we can see each year, you know, what Steve set aside to save.
Done with the slides and the playgrounds and the things like that.
Yep.
Yep, Councilor Weinstein.
So I just have a couple comments that have really have been addressed, but I want to, it's just my opinion that I think that we should be putting those funds back into the capital, you know, into improving our, the facilities that we have. So I'm happy that that's happening. And as someone, I've been at the senior center quite a bit, and I think the, the level of programming is really impressive. And, and the, the community definitely benefits from what's happening. You know, sometimes we think of recreation just for kids, but the senior program is, is really vibrant and amazing, and Kim does a great job, and.
That was my baby.
Yeah. I mean, it's really, it's just a great program. So to see people getting out on a regular basis, like, I follow the Facebook page, and I, I see all the amazing breadth of trips, and it's just really nice to see, so.
The bus, bus line item is significantly, it's not to be the fifty-five plus population.
Yeah.
And we are definitely servicing that population.
And I know that in the summer, it's a, it's a pull, because there's camp, you know, yeah. So, so I know that that's a struggle for them, because, you know, that's, they want to get out in the summer too, so. Yeah, good, glad.
Rec is taking us half an hour.
Councilor Price.
The first apartment always does.
Following up on the CIP comment, I think that one of the places that I've spent a little time that brought me in contact has been the playground area over, you know, near the rec center. That, that preschool area, I know they, they had the slide, the big slide problem, but the whole, that whole area sort of seems under-invested the last time I was there. It's been, it's been a while.
It's in the process of, we have a new swing set in the CIP, which is the old one, but the brand-new playground was just retrofitted. Well, the old, bigger playground was, had some needed repairs. And so that will, is a very popular playground, and that will, is fine for now. The new playground, the little one, we're adding some features to that. And then the plan on the other side of the gazebo is the splash pad. So we hope that basically we can see some action. Because the FDM, revolving funds, and, and other areas which were, that won't be part of the task list.
Well, that's good. I mean, I think it's, because those playground areas are, since they're, since where they're located means they get into high use.
They're a.
And it kind of, it went through a long transition period where it wasn't, you know, I keep hearing from my relative, let's say, about why isn't this?
It's, it's in the process right now. I'd say two to three years, we'll see some, there's significant change in that, hopefully.
Councilor Burns.
This is really kind of more just a question. I see the splash pad in the line item here, is that included in the two to three years that you were just talking about? Or how is that coming? I think that's an exciting thing.
We put in five thousand the year before due to what we thought the splash pad was going to cost at the time. But since that, it needs to be designed differently. To save water and so forth. So you see five thousand here in the revolving. But in CIP, that's actually, says twenty-five thousand set aside. And again, a lot of that will depend on certain grants that might be applied, that might be able to reduce that base. But it's earmarked right now for that?
Yeah, okay.
Is that coming with soon, or in like two to three years?
The plan is two years.
Two years, okay.
I'm applying for it to LWC grant.
Okay.
Grant that might help fund it, but again, not knowing.
Yeah.
Change that.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the things we really took in consideration was our water situation.
Yeah, right, sure.
Our first thing was, the first one was a system which most of them do, that the water just goes back into the drain. And we said, you know what? We can't do that. So we, we're looking at it again. So that's why we're about two years out, because we want to make sure where we are.
Just two quick comments. If we do, if you're going to go to this splash pad, which my sense is that it would be, my hope that it would be part of the revolving fund. And, or at least some percentage of it, I don't know. And lastly, if you do a project, because we're looking at the numbers and whatnot for the revolving fund, have you had projects or events that went upside down? Meaning you had a plan to have extra, you said the hundred thousand this year and sixty-something last year. How do you deal with the, the ones that don't take off or the ones that aren't profitable? How's that reflected? Is that just blended into this overall number, Matt? I'm guessing it is.
It is. And, and there, we are expecting some of the programs to lose money, okay? They do evaluate those programs as to whether to cut them, okay? They do add new programs with anticipated revenues. So, you know, what, what we're trying to do is, is say, we're investing in new programs, we're trying to draw people to it, but if they don't come, then we're going to cut it.
The splash and dash kayak race this year was a perfect example of that. We received a five-thousand-dollar grant from Land River Advisory Council to seed that event. And it cost approximately, I would say, eight thousand dollars. Five of it was to the grant, and I received three thousand dollars in sponsorships and donations. So it didn't cost the town any money at all, but we brought in about twelve-hundred dollars in revenue. Next year, I won't get that grant. So as that program builds, because every year, a new event like that takes a while for word-of-mouth participation, that'll, it might, you know, will probably stay label, level until we can build that program, that event. If it doesn't, then it just goes away. So it allows us to get that, that growth as that revolves.
Okay, Kyle.
You mentioned a grant for the splash pad or for splash pad type. What was that grant?
The LWCF grant.
LWCF, thank you.
How much is that going to pay?
You can go up to.
Because it was a quarter of a million, wasn't it, roughly?
It was twenty, about two-hundred, yes.
Two-forty-nine, I heard.
Yes, two-forty, not forty.
Two-forty-five.
LWCF can go up to seventy-five thousand. We haven't applied for one in quite some time. There's a good chance the summers with recreation are going to use LWCF grant to support their splash pads, so we know the precedent has been there. The cycle is in March. They accept people in June, and that's why it's taking a year. But again, depending on, you know, what happens with LWCF monies to begin with, but that's the plan right now, is to apply for that grant. And I completely have an agenda.
Just last question, then, Councilor Nazaro. If we did do that as a revolving fund, how, how do you envision that playing out? How would you set it up? In other words, if you were going to make it part of the revolving fund, the splash pad, would you make it an option for people to add it to the, to a program to charge? How would, you know?
We discussed charging fees to use it. Charging buttons.
Okay.
But, one last. I thought it had to be part of the revolving fund, from what I'm, I've been.
It wasn't going to be, I heard the other night.
Well, let's clarify everything, then. Rumors are one thing, and one, I think there's things that need to be, one, we're not asking for tax dollars for this. We have money that has been put aside for improvements in the capital reserve funds. That's the purpose of it, is we've been putting yearly is into improve recreational opportunities. Part of the money they're looking for is, yes, to come from the revolving fund. And the third part is to offset expenses, charging a fee to use it. You could even charge it, you know, buy an annual pass or something like that, they could go in. That's one thing we're looking at. We just want to see what the actual operational cost would be. If it's minimal, then it's not, you know, we already have the money from other sources, and it's not going to hit the tax rate.
But CIP is taxed off?
It is, but what the purpose of the capital reserve funds are, you put money aside so you can do these improvements. And, you know, it's either build a new park, build a swing set, those kind of items. And this is just one of the things that we've heard people want, is a water feature.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it would be really beneficial for just everybody in the summer and summer camp, too.
It's one of our biggest. Yeah.
Councilor Nazaro.
Can I ask a question about their capital reserve fund? So page fifty-two has the capital reserve in looking eighteen-six-six-six in that. But when you look at their five requests that are in the packet that we got from capital reserve, it adds up to about thirty-six thousand dollars. And in their, their capital improvement plans, only one of them actually has an accounting for how the hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand is already going to be used. This, the vehicle, it says forty-four-two-twenty, and the current balance is going to be used towards purchasing that vehicle. But the other plans literally don't say how much is coming from the current balance. So I'm just having trouble at doing the math and figuring out how we got to eighteen from the thirty-two requested. Like, which ones are we not funding this year?
What mine?
The bus was extended for three more years. It was actually supposed to be coming this year, but we extended it back for three more years. But you always are going to need that bus. So the one we're referring to, the five, the lease one, that's an additional bus. Because usually it's just purchased, and then it is replaced.
Right, like a vehicle. So I guess, no, my question, question one, your requests for your capital improvement plan in the packet we got was a little over thirty-six thousand dollars. The line item inside of the budget we're being asked to approve is around eighteen-six-hundred. So it's half-ish.
Yeah.
The, my question is, well, I have two questions. One, what are we not funding in the capital improvement plan through contributions to the capital reserve fund? Cutting it in half.
It's the restrooms. It's the restroom at the, we put in.
Well, that's only thirteen, so there's another three somewhere.
All right, when I was the one who put the eighteen. All right. When, I was the one who put the eighteen-six-six-six in there, okay? And basically, that's the number I felt that the taxpayers could afford, not necessarily...
I agree, that, like, we probably can't afford the entire thirty-six, but I want to know what against, what plan is it coming on?
We don't, we'll have, if eighteen is the only thing that's approved, we'll have to reschedule what we do. If the council adds additional money, or the budget committee does, then we'll do, then we'll...
So, I kind of feel like we should get the thought-out plan, not the, like, what you feel like in your gut the taxpayer could handle. You know what I'm saying? Like, this is what we want to cut.
But a lot of the, a lot of the funding is going to start coming from the revolving fund for a lot of these programs. So, if it's going to be, like, if they're going to buy a bus, it's going to come from their revolving fund because it's going to be revenue generating.
So, but there's like, there are line items in the capital improvement plan, like, frankly, I think the splash pad's a good example. You have, like, a line in here for how much is coming from the revolving fund to fund that. But like, none of the others do.
They have been in there for, I'm not sure, I believe the swing set was in there. The bleachers is just a standard, and it's always been funded through capital improvement.
Yeah.
These were at, these were last year, and this is just continuing on this year.
So, it's, I still haven't really gotten to the...
But the CIP doesn't necessarily address fungibility, right?
There's fungibility within a individual fund. So, the recreation fund, she could use this for whatever she wants.
Yeah.
Well, the council has to approve it, but...
We, we don't, you're right. And that would be the, the best step would be able to go the, the next step, for the CIP would say, annually, you're going to get six hundred thousand dollars, and here are your, here are your programs, and this is how we're going to fund it.
If he wants a plan, I think.
But, and, yeah, we're, we're close to getting there for that. We, this is much better than we were two years ago. What you'd say is, you'd actually have two different budgets. You'd vote on a budget, the general fund operating budget, then annually, the council would vote on a capital improvement budget. That would also include withdrawals from capital reserve funds, that would include bonding, that would include all of the sources of funding.
I mean, I'm fine if we vote on one budget, as long as, like, the plan actually, like, aligns to the budget that we're presented. Because the plan that we have right here does not.
And it won't. And it won't. Because the plan is what, the plan is what the recommendation is from the committee. The budget is what I'm recommending we can afford. And what I'm recommending is that we're placing eighteen thousand dollars into the fund, and hopefully in the future, we'll be able to withdraw to address some of those.
Okay. So, I guess, we just have a philosophical disagreement, that I feel like if you're saying we can only afford eighteen, it should be reflected in the plan, capital reserve plan that we get. They come back and, Amy gets told, you're only getting eighteen, not thirty-six. How does that adjust this plan? So, we see as an actual feasible plan, not the plan she presented, and that we know right now is not being funded.
But that's how, state law requires us to present a plan like that, is what our needs are. It's not the actual budget. The CIP is what our needs are. The budget is what we can actually afford. Because what we're doing, what the purpose of a CIP is, is from impact fees and long-range planning. Yes, we need a bus. We're not going to be able to afford it, but we know it's in there. If we were to charge impact fees for recreation, we need to say, we need a bus, or we need this kind of thing. That's what that is. That's the...
Well, not impact fees, it's also dollars through taxation that go to the...
Correct. But the, the main purpose of it is to say...
So, I guess, my, my second question, I'll leave it at this, is that there's a hundred-and-thirty-seven-six-fifty-three in there?
Yes.
But again, the only, out of the five capital improvement plans, the only one that accounts for any portion of what's already in there, and this has been, since I was on the capital improvement fund, I've said, committee, I've been saying this, none of them, like, actually, outside of that one, for the forty-four-two-twenty, that accounts for the fact that there's already something there, none of them do. They all, like, none of them say how they're using a portion of what's already in the balance. They all just quote the exact balance.
And I don't disagree with you on that one. Then the department head should be doing that.
I, and, it's not just REC.
Right.
You're just, you're just the first one, so you get the philosophical statements up front. There's just one of them, there's problems with our capital improvement plans.
And it's, and that's, as you know, we've been working to improve it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, I'd skedaddle.
The next is police.
You get out of here without, with eight hundred bucks, with Nick for eight hundred bucks.
Usually, police is first, right?
Yeah. But he's got to go on a trip, so.
Hey, Matt, while we're transitioning, a quick question. On the compensated absences that you gave us, if you look down next to some of the names, what is that seventy-five thousand on that sheet on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Well, you can come on up, Kyle, when, when there's, can you just explain that? Because I didn't know what these numbers meant.
Wait, wait. We got another question for recreation.
You're not looking for funding for the facilities, as far as the outdoor restaurant facilities?
If you add up all these...
It was ten, but it was, sorry, two, eighteen thousand.
And if you added up all these, it would be this, and these would be this, and these would be...
Okay. Question number two is, this is used by the schools, the high school, baseball plays there, softball plays there, soccer.
It's not a revenue generating facility, so it's, it's a need that I don't, that it's...
Why would this all, why would it all come out of REC if the school is using...
Because it's our field.
Okay.
I've asked the same kinds of questions, Kyle.
It's our field.
And so, and not to digress, but to that point, like, we plow the schools, right? And that's part of the town budget, and it's the same kind of thing. And I had said to Steve a while ago, just for accuracy's sake, not, you know, like, we're, we're talking about maybe thirty percent or whatever we end up if we do the, you know, combination finance, and we, maybe at some point, the town would get to
Yes.
a place where, that we actually budget accurately to what the services that are provided. Because right now, we're not really doing that here. If you're asking about the fields and stuff, and it's really more used by school...
Yeah, the fields and the actual facilities that, if REC is going to be responsible for paying for, should they be co-operated? Help offset that? Well, just a question, just a question.
They are used by all.
Thank you.
What I'm saying is, should it be predicated on usage by whom? That's all. Just for budgeting, not to say we're not going to do it, but just for budgeting.
I've got my light, and I don't...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Price.
That's okay. I'm just, on, on the question of, you know, the, the way that it's been budgeted based on ref, you know, roughly the size of the budget for the finance director and stuff like that. I think trying to get too accurate, as we move towards shared personnel, trying to get too accurate, because it can shift from year to year.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
And I, and I think, you know, if you start chasing those small differences for reasons of accuracy...
I know. I was, taking it for the session.
You could end up with a lot of administrative overhead, and in the end, it comes out of the same taxpayer. As long as you've got good oversight to make sure money's not wasted.
Right.
It's not that important to me that it be allocated to one or the other. You could have more of a give and take on that.
I agree.
I don't disagree. It would be nice to know what the dollars are, and then I could feel, you know, we don't know what the dollars are, that's...
Police is page forty. Welcome, chief.
Are we supposed to stand and salute?
Not this guy. So, this is my first time attending currently the council, so not all I get, I'm nervous. The police department budget is an increase of one point one-nine percent. The majority of the increase is due to salaries, there are contractual increases by the union members, as well as overtime. The biggest increase that I'm asking for is the overtime. Last year, it was funded at a hundred-and-seven thousand. We went over budget by sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars last year. We were, we were down to two officers. One was in a police academy, and we were out with an officer who was injured for eight to nine months. And it seems like over the past decade, every year, it seemed to have an officer who was injured, regardless of the injury, if it happens on duty or off duty. It just seems like we're always down one. The previous year, the budget was at, the overtime was at one-oh-five, it increased to one-oh-seven, and we ended up spending a hundred and, like, a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. And, and some of the other reasons that we're starting to see a lot of increase in overtime is, we're being asked to do a lot more with the court system. I'll give you a couple of examples. They've changed, the legislators have changed the DWI law, for example. If, if an individual is arrested for drunk driving, we're required to give them the next available court date, which might be the following day. That means we have to keep the officer on overtime at the end of a shift to finish that DWI report, when normally, we would give them twenty-four to forty hours to finish a report. We can no longer do that. We make them stay, they have to get all the complaints done, and be prepared for court. The, the second change that the court has given us is, when an individual is arrested for domestic violence, in previous years, we used to be able to give them our next available court date, which would normally be thirty days out. We're now required to give them the next available court date, which is sometimes the next day. Again, the officer's required to stay after hours and write the reports on top of all the paperwork that they already have. The third thing that the court, and I'm not passing the court, actually, I am. The third thing that the...
I was going to say, they're going to, they're going to say they don't have enough money either, so.
I don't think there's any judges that are living in Newmarket. So, the third thing that the court is, is requiring of us now is, when we have a trial date set up, and I'm sure some of you have been to the court system.
Wait, you assume...
Not yet.
You're not a presidential candidate, watching.
So, now, when they schedule trials, let's say Newmarket has a, an assault case that is scheduled for next Thursday. We may be listed as the primary, the first alternative, or the second alternative. So, if we have two officers who are witnesses, we have to pay them a penalty for court. They may not testify that day, if they're the first alternative or the second alternative. And this may happen two to three times before their case is heard in front of the court. It's frustrating, it's, it's relatively new this past year. I intend on, after getting established, having a conversation with the New Hampshire Chiefs of Police Association to see if we can address this. It just seems that the, the cost is being burdened on the local taxpayers when the, when the court system is trying to be cost-effective. They're just passing it on to us. The other reason that we're using a lot more overtime is obviously the opiate epidemic that we've had. We're treating every heroin overdose as a, as a crime scene. Because if, if someone wants to die, the attorney general's office has told us that that's a crime scene, and we need to process it as such. So, with that...
Excuse me, if somebody wants to die?
If somebody was to die.
Was to die, okay. No, that's different, that's a big difference. Go ahead.
If somebody was to die, we would have to treat that as a, as a homicide, to find out
I get it.
who gave the drugs. With that, we require our detectives to come out and process the scene. So, those are the reasons, some of the reasons that the, that the overtime has gone up. The other reason, which is very basic, if we have an officer who has been here more than five years, they get another week of vacation. If they're here ten years, they get another week of vacation, fifteen years, another week of vacation until they max out. So, obviously, we're going to be paying more in, in, to cover the, the cost of the vacation, in the, in the holiday time. I do have a breakdown of, of what we spent on, if you want to hear it, on our overtime last year. And I apologize for not making copies for you, but I can just give you a quick rundown of how it was broken down. So, overtime in, in fifteen, sixteen, to cover, just for, for court time, for an example, we spent just under five thousand dollars. To cover vacation costs, we spent just over, it's like forty-six thousand. Sick time, twenty-five thousand. Holiday time was just under twenty thousand. Training, the, the cost to send an officer to training was just over seven thousand. Extended coverage, we're going to see that, that line item go up dramatically, I think, with the new requirements by the court, but that was just under thirty-five-hundred. Our SER call-outs, we're, we're a member of the Seacoast Emergency Response Team, so we have two individuals assigned to that team. Those call-outs could be anywhere from an hour to twenty-four hours. And it seems we've had quite a few call-ups lately. That is the big increase. Now, for the good news, the biggest decrease is the gasoline, that I just want to get right to. Last year, the gasoline, I think we're cutting it from thirty-four thousand to twenty-two thousand, and I think the actual was right around sixteen thousand that we spent last year. Those are the two items that really jump out on this budget. Other than that, everything is level funded. And if you had a take in questions.
Counselor, I don't know if there's...
Butts first, Weinstein.
So, my question, I guess, is if you could provide a little bit of a sort of state of Newmarket, you know, kind of where we're at as far as crime goes. Because when you talk about, you know, you need extra, you need overtime for these, you know, for DWI and for heroin overdoses, like, where are we at with that? Are you seeing an increase generally, you know, where are we trending? I guess that's my question.
It's a, it is a pendulum swing when it comes to the heroin epidemic. We had a really bad year last year. We really took it hard. We were one of the highest in the county when it came to, and with, when it came to the use of Narcan on calls from Newmarket. Narcan is, you all know what Narcan is?
We know.
Narcan.
Narcan is a, it's a drug that reverses the effects of opiate to prevent someone from dying.
Is there a number of how many cases were received, and how much it costs?
I think, I think last year, we were just under fifty cases last year.
How much does it cost?
The Narcan? I, I think it's right around fifty dollars per.
Okay.
So, but, so, we, we were really bad last year with the heroin. With drug use comes, obviously, property crime, thefts, smashing grass, where they'll, they'll break your five-hundred-dollar window to get two dollars worth of change out of your ashtray, burglaries. Violent crime seems to be staying the same. We, we're not seeing an increase in violent crime. We have a great number of visits to the Child Advocacy Center, the enforcement where we, trained interviewers will interview children who are the victims of domestic and sexual assaults. We're one of the highest per capita in the county to use a child advocacy center. When we, when we go to the child advocacy center, we have to send a detective over there to watch the interview. Does that answer your question? I mean, I can tell you, one, one statistic that's alarming to me right now that I, I just researched was our traffic accidents. I think I put it in my, my report to the council. I don't have an answer for you right now. I don't know if it, if it has to do with texting and driving. I have tasked an officer right now to research grants for the hands-free law, that you can actually have an officer out there just enforcing the hands-free law, as well as researching grants for speeding grants and DWI grants. But that, that is the one statistic that's alarming to me right now, is the number of traffic accidents and fatal accidents. New Market has been notoriously really good about not having fatal car accidents.
Yeah.
This year, we've already had two.
Yeah.
Counselor Thompson.
Overall, chief, it seems like you have what you need, okay, in the budget. This is comfortable for you, and, and it, it seems like we've been able to take what we're saving in, in the fuel and putting it toward things that you need, like overtime and whatever and whatever. Okay. Bottom line, I don't have a problem with this budget. I do just want to make sure that you do have what you need. And I appreciate your comment about getting together with the other chiefs and potentially pushing back on the courts because of this lost time with you guys. You're off the streets. You know, the cost of it, to me, is one thing, but you're off the streets, and waiting around at the, the court's discretion, so to speak. So, I'd appreciate following up on that and going back and saying, okay, well, we tried it for whatever it is, a year or so, and here's why it's not working. We need people on the, on the streets here, and we do appreciate all the time that you spend here. Thank you.
Counselor Nizarro.
So, chief, question about overtime and question about capital reserve. Based on the numbers you gave me for, gave us for twenty-sixteen's actuals, really seventy-six percent of that overtime... really seventy-six percent of that overtime is vacation, sick, and holiday.
I'm sorry, could you?
So you said forty-six, like out of the hundred-and-twenty-one, forty-six K was vacation, seventy-five, twenty-five K was sick, twenty K was holiday, and then seven K for training, five K for court, three-point-five K for extended coverage? Like when you give the breakdown of what the hundred-and-twenty-one is? But really, three-quarters of that is because of holiday, sick, and vacation.
Correct, and, but these are, they're contractual obligations?
I get it, but I'm just saying, like, we're talking about the court and everything, and I agree, like, the court shouldn't be, like, jerking us around having sat as a witness, like, or waiting to be a witness, I understand how long it is.
And I think, I have to touch over, I think some of the increase can be explained by, as officers get raises, it's always gonna, their, their hourly rate and their overtime rate's going to increase.
So that's really my question. What was the vacation, sick, and holiday overtime for like twenty-fifteen and twenty-fourteen? Just those three?
Twenty-fourteen, fifteen, we were at, to cover vacation, we were about thirty-two fifty.
There we go.
To cover holiday, we were just over, just under twenty-six thousand. For court, we were just over seven thousand.
So actually, we were more for court two years ago?
And, and it could be on a case-by-case issue too, and it could be what the, what the courts have going on at the time too.
Was our total overtime in twenty-fifteen?
Hey, you. It was a hundred-and-five thousand.
One-oh-five. Do you know what twenty-fourteen was?
Ninety-two thousand, two-twenty-nine.
Ninety-two. So it's definitely trending up, but my only thought, and maybe we gotta wait a year to see this, is, like, is hundred-twenty where it's plateaued? Is it gonna continue to go up? Like, if it keeps going, ninety-five, one-oh-five, one-twenty, one-thirty, like, that's, to me, there's an issue there. And it can't just be, especially looking at this, that it's the court. There's gotta be some, like, sort of, there's this upward trend in overtime, and I've, like, require some level of analysis beyond what I think we can do sitting up here.
If I actually may, what the analysis falls into then is you look at staffing. At some point in time, the amount of overtime that you're paying is actually less expensive to add another officer.
Thank you.
I mean, so, yeah.
That's the level of analysis that has to go on.
Absolutely, we're just, we're not there yet.
And I can tell you, when I started here, nineteen ninety-seven, we had thirteen officers, and twenty-sixteen, we had thirteen officers. So we have not increased staffing.
What's the, what's the average starting salary for an officer?
Fifty-three? No?
No, forty-two.
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two, so you wrap it with vacation and everything else, so you're looking at, let's just say, two. So like eighty-four? But just if you hire one person, you're not eliminating all overtime, because it's not gonna change the person that has to stay longer to fill out a DUI report.
So in two thousand fourteen, what was vacation? How many weeks is that, how far, or was the dollar amount?
Yeah.
In two thousand fourteen, the ending, the ending in two thousand fourteen?
Uh, well, you, well, I don't have my overtime broken out by vacation, the chief did that analysis.
I'm sorry, I only went back to fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, and, and I, I guess, if we have police officers that are here longer, then they gain more time. That's more that we pay out for overtime, correct?
Correct, yes.
So if there's thirteen police officers that are accruing time, they're paying out more, correct?
Correct.
Could that be part of the reason why it's increasing?
What's the average tenure, or how many people do we have that are more than ten years here?
Well, I can tell you this.
A lot of them.
I can retire next November. Jeff Science can retire anytime. I have sergeant that can retire anytime, I have another sergeant that can retire anytime, I have school resource officer that can retire at any time. So we've done a very good job of retention of half the department.
There's savings there, too.
I feel like in my second year in the council, we were told that we're like a starter force, that people come to and leave.
But we've done a good job of, of trying to become competitive with the Seacoast when it comes to pay. We're getting there. So it's, 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 it's a great place to work, we, we, we train our officers very well. And we're getting there competitively, we try to compete with these other agencies.
I can tell you, when I first started, that was, that was my first question I asked Chief Seer, was looking at our demographics for the community, demographics for the police department, I compared it to another community about the same size in the Seacos. And we have nowhere near the turnover that that community has.
We did for a time.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, it flipped, we don't have it any longer.
Okay.
It was a quarter, six to seven that have been here.
One other question about CIP?
Sure.
So your capital improvement, which the police has generally been one of the stronger capital improvement plans, and it's probably been like this before, and I, for some reason, didn't notice it. Each year, you're sort of fluctuating the contributions, and it's because of the way your spreadsheets are set up, where it says replace, you're not putting any money in for that year. You gotta look at the spreadsheets, do you have this, Chief?
I, I do not have that in front of me, I, I just have what the, I just have the budget full.
Matt, do you have it?
No.
So, you wanna look at this one? I know it. The, so each year, you're putting in, reason for a capital improvement plan is that each year, you put in a little bit so that when you actually purchase it, you don't have to draw, like, have this huge spike in the tax rate.
Correct.
But the way your spreadsheet, this is literally an Excel problem, the way your spreadsheet's set up, where you mark replace, there is no contribution for that line item, even though, like, there still should be an annualized cost. So like, you have a year where you're replacing two things, where all of a sudden it dips, and then the next year it spikes. And then, it's like actually acting contrary to the purpose of the capital reserve, which is to keep everything flat. See what I'm saying?
I do, yeah.
I would just take a look at that. For both, I think it's in both that and dispatch. Thank you.
You good? I just have a couple of quick ones.
Sure.
And it's short money, but I have to ask.
Absolutely.
Uniforms was eighty-eight, spent forty-two. Honestly, I don't know what fifteen was, so I'm not even gonna try. Do you think that needs to be eighty-eight?
Well-
Because they're keeping it flat essentially, and, Matt, do you, do you buy any chance to have fiscal year fifteen?
I do.
Could you just tell, what was the gross spent? That's all I want to know.
Uh, fifteen.
Actual expenditure?
Sixty-three oh-nine.
Okay, so it was a little closer.
But the year before was seventy-four oh-one, and the year before that was ninety-two thirty-five.
Okay. So, is there any reason it was so much lower this year?
We did not have the turnover. It's, it's expensive, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars just to outfit one officer.
Okay. Do you think that needs, doesn't, do you think, I mean, I'm just asking, do you think it needs to be eighty-eight?
I think it does need to be eighty-eight, we decreased the, in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, it used to be ten thousand eight hundred, and we cut it back to eighty-eight hundred.
But you have good retention now. I'm only, I know it's short money and it's not a big deal, I'm just asking, you know?
I would feel comfortable leaving it at eighty-eight, and I can tell you that about every five years, we have to replace body armor for our officers. And they can't share body armor, because everybody's physique is different.
Can I jump in and answer this a little bit more? If you look at the personnel there, right now, they're down one officer just because the chief, the old chief had retired, okay? So they're gonna have to outfit that person probably this year. But next year, we potentially could have one or two more open positions due to retirements, and that's just gonna-
No mas, we're good. I give up, just ask. Again, it's all short money, criminal investigation was, was, you know, less than half. And youth public relations was a fourth, you know, seventy-five percent less. Again, it's very, very short money, I'm just asking.
Sure, um, the-
Well, it's actually not short, short, but it's not a lot of my-
The criminal investigation, it's hard to predict what we're going to have criminal investigations in two thousand eighteen. We don't know if this heroin epidemic is gonna get any worse. We don't know if there's gonna be other requirements placed upon us on how we package evidence. Some of the items that we purchase out of this are, are evidence supply kits, are drug detection kits, portable recording devices for our officers. When we, when we interview children, we're required by law to record that. It's, it's preferable to do video, but we don't have that capability right now. So all of our officers are, are issued handheld recording devices. These break, so these are some of the costs that we incur. Also, there was a, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, Matt, what was fifteen? For that line item, Chris, criminal investigation?
Criminal investigation?
Yeah. That'll, that'll just save us a lot of time. I'm just curious to know what it is.
They actually spent twenty-five hundred dollars, oh, I'm wrong, one, hold on one second. One thousand two hundred and fifty-two.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's about half. I mean, I'm, I'm okay, I just, I just had to ask, because it's, it's, you know, fifty percent more. And then the youth relations at five hundred, what was it in fifteen, Matt, youth relations?
Seven hundred and thirty-two.
So, you know, you got, it's not a lot of dough. I'm just asking if there's anything there.
This year, we, we actually applied for a grant, and we received some, some grant money to offset the costs that didn't come out of the operating budget, to purchase publications for our school resource officer. That could be one of the reasons it's decreased.
Do you wanna reduce the line item?
Breast acts.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Personally, I wouldn't like to see it reduced, I'd like to see it used. I think that that's important, so.
That's all I got. Other than to say, I had one investigation, and I have to say, your officer was incredibly professional, and it was a good experience as far as interaction.
What are you being investigated for?
It was actually, it was actually the other, it was-
I'm joking.
Why, why I said on this council, why I subjected myself to this? Yeah, go ahead.
You brought up body armor. Every five years, it has to be replaced? What's the cost of body armor?
Body armor is between eight and nine hundred dollars, depending on the officer's physique. Some officers' physiques just don't coincide with certain types of body armor.
I get it, I get it.
Do you need money for gym equipment?
So, I guess my question is, so you're buying, you're not buying it all in one year, you're buying it-
Yes, we're trying, we're trying to buy two a year. Once in a while, we'll, we'll find a bulletproof vest grant, which pays for half of it.
Okay. I just, I hear five years, I'm gonna say, I think capital reserve, but it just doesn't qualify for the amount. Thank you.
I would enjoy the rest of your day, Chief, unless you want to stay longer. It's a pleasure, I'm glad you came.
Thank you.
And today's a take-back day.
Today, oh, can I do a plug? Today is our drug take-back day, we're participating with all the other-
Hold on a minute.
Well, you're giving up a lot of your rights.
I don't think we're not on television.
Today's our drug take-back day, between ten and two, feel free, any unused drugs, you can walk into the Newmarket Police Department and hand them off. We're not gonna ask you for your name or anything, we're not gonna ask where you, where you got them. Our goal is to get as many prescribed medications off the tree as we can.
Described medications.
Right, any type of drug, any type of drug. We're not going to discriminate today when people turn in drugs.
Steve will see you later.
Thank you.
We've taken enough swings.
The next is library, it's on page fifty-three, and I'm going to put the annual reminder to the town council that council has only authority over the bottom line of the library budget. The line items are governed by the independent Board of Library Trustees.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Carrie Gadwa, library director, and I have two trustees, Julie Mary Mahoney and Laura Claye Hope. Just have to say that I'm presenting the budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. And the past year, we, this has been across all categories and services operated, circulation has increased six-point-eight-eight percent. We added four hundred and seventy-four new borrowers, one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight renewed their library cards, and we had fifty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty checkouts for the year, which is the six-point-eight-eight increase. That's for all materials. I'd like to say our library is definitely a community center, and it's used by people from all walks of life. We always have patrons coming in, sitting, reading newspapers, the magazines. Our six public computers are always in constant use, great service for those who don't have internet access at home. And we have all kinds of programming, we have recreational programming for funds, knitting, watercolor, blue, magen, we meet on a weekly basis. And we support five book groups. We have cultural events that we apply for grants from the New Hampshire Department of Humanities, and we have a couple of the New Hampshire Fans Council programs a year. We get speakers from UNE Speakers Bureau. And of course, we have our children's programming, baby lapsit and preschool, and baby lapsit has been really well attended the last year and a half, it averages eighteen to twenty, three years every week. And our summer reading program, we had a hundred and ten children participate. So, across the board, music is up everywhere. That's why I were asking for a one-point-eight increase, it's basically to keep up with the books and materials, increase in price, and to increase the programming budget.
Counselor Weinstein?
Yep, Counselor Weinstein?
My question is actually about the programming budget, because I saw that there was a significant increase, and I was curious what your plans are.
What was that?
Uh, the programming, the line item?
Yeah.
I was just curious what your plans are, if you have some, a specific program that you're gonna introduce?
More, more programs of the same, I mean, we, like holiday programs, we, last year, we had two Christmas events. This year, I'd like to try to have four. Maybe add a, a young adult. Very hard. I do have them coming in more, they're studying in the library, but I'd like to get some programs going for them. We don't have a young adult librarian, but I do have a new staff member who is willing to do that, and she, I think she'd be very good at it.
That's a huge growth area, I think, and I'm, as a mother of a young adult-ish, almost young, I don't know. I don't know what he is.
We did move our young adult book collection out of the, it used to be in the children's room, and now we've moved it out into its own area, and the increase in the young adult book is now over a hundred percent.
Wow.
And we do have the summer high school children in there studying, which is great. Yes, just be more programming of probably similar type things with the young adults.
Thank you.
Counselor Thompson and Mizuro after.
I'm on the health insurance line item. Fiscal year sixteen, actual expenditure fifty-seven eighty-three. It's in the budget at fifteen thousand for this year, and fifteen thousand in-
Just three years.
On proposal, can, on the question to Steve, please. Could you explain where the fifteen thousand comes from in the health insurance regulations if we're not actually spending it? Why are we budgeted so high against actuals?
Because I have to look at Matt on him.
Currently, there is potential for two people to either get on health insurance or expand it. And, and that is always a risk, especially for a small budget like this. This one here is more of a budget-to-the-max risk potential.
Okay, so then I'll expand upon that. The bottom line, again, actual expenditure fiscal year sixteen is three hundred and twelve, six fifty-three. So there's always this, this dialogue back and forth about budget-to-budget versus actual-to-budget. So budget-to-budget, seventeen to eighteen, is about fifty-three hundred dollars difference. But if you go to actual spend, you're more like seventy-three. And that's where I got on that health insurance line item. I personally would be more comfortable not doing the one-point-eight percent increase, and if, if there was something that could potentially be cut without seemingly handicap, I think that fifteen thousand might be a, a place to do it in level, in level funding.
My husband is retiring this year and I'll probably have to go and get my own health insurance.
Okay.
Maybe fifteen thousand.
How many individuals on healthcare at the library?
Two of us buy help, I do and another.
And there's one who has, who receives it?
Who receives help, we, we have two people.
There's nobody who receives it.
Right, they just receive the bio.
Fifteen thousand is the, if everyone did.
Actually, if, if the two who could, if the two who could, that wouldn't even be...
Yeah, she's saying that's just her.
Is there, this would be on the town insurance plan that the other town staffers would have, right? It's the same plan that would, would come on. Probably, many of us need to do health insurance and the Affordable Care Act is there. What happens with the town employee, I mean, we are required to provide it to employees.
Yes.
But it's just, I'm not talking about Mrs. Gadwa here, it's just, if I worked for the town and I could go on the Affordable Care Act, is that an acceptable opt-out? This is more procedural than anything, I'm not sure how that would work.
We would pay you to be on the, the marketplace, if that was your choice. But what I'm seeing is the employees are either on our plan or they're on the plan of their spouse.
Spouse plan or something.
Yeah.
But if somebody were to do that, because the plan is to be affordable and go on the Affordable Care...
Right.
Do we have any idea, let's say it costs the town fifteen thousand dollars to insure one of yours? If it's ten thousand dollars to pay them to be on ACA?
Yeah.
I don't know, I...
There's always that question and I, I always felt that that might be the direction, that, that everything is heading, okay? But at this point, it's more expensive to put our employees on the marketplace than it is for us to buy it outright, okay?
Okay, and that's my, and that's my question.
Yeah, and, and just so that you know, for the rest of the health budgets, health is budgeted at actual. This is the only one that is budgeted at risk just because their budget is so small.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Nazaro, I think, and then Bowden, and then Weinstein.
Totally clear, this is not fungible at all with the rest of our accounts.
Correct.
Just so I get an entire picture of the financial health of the library, 'cause I think it is an important function of the community. The, what is your trust sitting at right now? Do you have a trust as well as the budget?
Their capital reserves. Their trust.
Capital reserve and a trust, right?
Yeah.
So there's, I know the capital reserve, I have that number, it's like one thirty-ish. What's the trust? Again, I know we don't touch it, I just wanna know that, the total picture of your financial health. Ballpark, I don't need it like to the cent.
Yeah, off the top of my head, it's probably a hundred thousand, maybe.
Okay.
It's also listed in the town report.
Is that the capital reserve or the trust?
That's the capital reserve. Line item is trust.
The, only, Matt, what's their part-time salaries from 2015? 'Cause it seems to be under-expended in the past and it's coming up.
Which one are you asking?
Part-time salaries?
Twenty fifteen, part-time salary. A hundred and two thousand, four sixty-eight.
So it was a hundred and two, then it went down in ninety-three, I'm guessing 'cause someone, they had an empty position for a while or something?
Yes.
Yep, so then it's going, now it's going up to a hundred and ten. Just seems like there's a...
We were understaffed, we had been understaffed, even on Saturdays, we had one person working. I have it now, right now, I'm fully staffed and I have two people on all the time.
So, was the hundred and two from 2015 fully staffed?
I believe so.
No, I had, I had employees, several, two employees that had to reduce their hours and eventually quit. Also, part of that money in the part-time salaries, we were going to move down to building maintenance because I was contracting the cleaning, we never moved it down to building maintenance. That's why it looks higher. Now, just to confuse the issue, I just recently, in the last month, have hired a person now to do the cleaning. It's gonna come out of part-time salaries and no more contract on the building maintenance.
So is, yeah, but building maintenance was super overspent in 2016.
Yeah, because part of that part-time salary, I think it was eight thousand.
Yes, let me, I'm sorry, I got you off, go ahead.
Just to hear, part of that eight thousand in the building maintenance was, was that the...
It's in our, it's in our minutes, but we never did, it never physically or got moved.
Was that the cleaning person?
Yes.
That eight grand, so that eight grand was part of the forty-two?
Yes, actually, I think it was closer to eleven.
Okay, just wanted to ask, I'm sorry.
So, I guess the philosophical question I have is, or the underlying question is, were, were the part-time salaries, and I guess the building maintenance too, now based on the cleaner, built on like actual salaries of people that are in there right now?
The part-time salaries is now based upon actuals.
That is if, that is if everyone is there for the entire year
Yes.
and works the two people per shift. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bowden.
Looking at twenty sixteen, line item for building and maintenance, budgeted was fifteen, it was forty-two oh seven-nine. Was that the addition of the HVAC, the boiler?
No, that was, we had four or five items that were unexpected. Well, one was the elevator, was a five-year inspection and it had some issues.
Okay.
The, yes, the HVAC, we had thermodynamics in there several times, that added up to several thousand for problems that we had during the winter. We, our security system, our alarm died, we had to get a total new box, have that put in.
Ish, okay.
And we repointed the bricks, the granite foundation out of that.
So when did you, when did the library replace the heating system?
We did that this past summer.
Some of it was paid in sixteen, but the bulk of it was paid in this current year.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that they were paid entirely, 'cause the last I remembered, the system has not been, I, I think they're complete now, but a month ago, they weren't complete.
Okay, looking at, I guess, the, in twenty sixteen, heating oil was thirteen thousand eight hundred, actual was seventy-eight hundred?
Right, and then we knocked it down for this year.
To twelve?
Yeah. That's what Matt and I talked about.
Okay.
We could go back, I'm seeing Matt thinking about what.
I was wondering if it goes down.
He's thinking it'll go down to ten.
Well, the...
I'm, I have to just say, it's nice to have someone other than me doing that. 'Cause I'm always...
Was that discussed as far as the, the fuel?
Kyle's right, or Counselor Bowden's correct.
I'm actually right?
No, no, like you're onto something, I should say.
Can I talk about heating fuel just really briefly?
And I don't have a crystal ball?
No, and, and that's part of the problem. Last year, heating fuel was two twenty-five a gallon. This up-and-coming heating season, we locked in at a dollar seventy-two-nine. Next year, who knows?
Dollar fifty.
So twenty seventeen, it's dollars and change, okay.
Well, no, yes, correct.
What was fifteen?
Can you buy it two years in advance?
I'm just curious, yeah.
Can we drop it to ten now?
What was fifteen, Matt, just, do you have that number real quick?
I have a little screen here.
I mean, we rolled the dice a little bit with the police and the fuel and we, we were okay this year.
Eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. And that year, last year was a little warm.
That was the high height.
The year before was a little cold.
It was high too, still the year before it was still pretty.
Sounds like this might be just right.
What was the cost of fuel that year?
It was at or just under two dollars a gallon.
The year before it was?
Yeah.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah, well, we buy our heating oil with the school, so we can get a, a pretty good price point.
Yeah, but still.
And just, lastly, the, the water, I guess it's, it's gonna be negligible. Both the increases, what, increases in water and sewer?
The, the water rate increase, they don't use that much water, it's not like a home where you'd see a large increase. The only reason why you'd see a difference is if there's a large amount of usage. The rate increase won't impact it, it's just so a little water being, you're not, you're not doing laundry, you're not doing dishes.
You need to increase that number, that's all.
We didn't increase the water.
Right, but the point was...
He was concerned that it wasn't.
We might get into trouble.
Yeah, we should be fine.
I wouldn't say not in trouble with it, but just under...
It'll be fine.
Just, I got a quick question, and then Counselor Weinstein. The building and maintenance, so I understand now that we had a person cleaning the place and that was really, should have been in a salary, for sake of argument, which is okay.
I had contractors cleaning it. The money was, should have been moved down from the part-time salaries into the building maintenance, which we didn't do. I mean, it came out at the end, you know, the bottom line, it's still the same.
So I took the eleven off, 'cause you said you're gonna hire somebody now?
Yes.
Right, so we budgeted fifteen, or, you know, and we spent thirty-three, and now we're up to twenty-three. And I'm just wondering, what is building and maintenance? You know, in other words, is that not covered somewhat by CIP at all? Or do you tell, you know...
Large projects would be, this is just regular, like even our budget has a, of building maintenance. It's more just a normal wear and tear versus large projects.
Okay. Okay. 'Cause I'm just trying to figure out, it's going up to twenty-three. And we do, you know, we, we're just, I'm gonna do a lot with the roof, I'm just saying.
If, if the council wants to reduce, that's one thing I was gonna ask in general. I need, I need a clear, yes, we're gonna reduce something.
We're trying to get the information before, you know, I mean, I, I tend to agree with the energy for a couple of grand. I mean, I don't know, you could...
Building, I'm sorry, building maintenance is also my shoveling. When we're open, you know, and it's icy, they have to have the shoveler come four or five times a day.
Who comes? Do you have a person on?
I have a person, yes. For instance, the light sockets in the tower room, half the wall wet. I had to get an electrician to do that. One of our lights, the ballast is gone, that needs to be fixed, that's, I think, nine hundred dollars. These things just keep cropping up with the library, it's an old building. Just over the years, I would say we've been building maintenance, I believe, but that would be spent.
Okay, and the only other thing I was gonna say, unemployment, we budgeted twenty-eight, we spent twelve. General training was two thousand, we spent six fifty-three. What'd we spend in training, Matt, in fifteen? Just asking. Was it in, was it over a grand, was it under a grand?
Have to find it first, in fifteen. Five hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
That's because New Hampshire Library Association didn't have a conference that year.
The year before, they spent two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine, and the year before that, they spent one thousand six hundred and sixty-eight.
Is there a conference expected in fiscal year eighteen?
Well, I mean, they're at six fifty-three this year, but anyway. I would say, if you wanna reduce it, I'd pick a number like four, but if people don't wanna, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just looking at the whole thing and that's just thought. Counselor Weinstein?
My question was actually about building maintenance, and I think my concern maybe is a little different, that you might not have enough money. So, you know, where you spent forty-two, and even if we take the eleven out and it's thirty, you know, whatever that is, and you have twenty-three, do you have a list of, I mean, obviously, things pop up all the time, but do you have a list of ongoing projects? Do you think it's enough money, I guess, is my, is my question?
I think it is, the trustees, we can move as we need to, but I think we have enough.
Right.
Some of the bigger issues have been solved, I mean, we do have things that keep cropping up, but I, I think.
I had, there was a recommendation to cut four thousand dollars. What I'm going to do is if I hear a recommendation or anything with a reduction, and this is for the council, can I do a quick poll of the council immediately after to see, 'cause we gotta make sure we get a number correct at the end and we move right on, right after there's a, that number is thrown out. I just wanna make sure we get the right numbers there. So, there was a recommendation, again, council only has authority over bottom line, to reduce the library budget by four thousand dollars.
I'll tell you what I base it on, just so people have an idea. It was the heating oil, it wasn't, you know, going down to where they are, it was kind of, to Counselor Bowden's number, it was ten. So I used a little bit there and I, I looked at the, the training number over the last few years, the unemployment numbers, so I mean, I don't think we're primping anybody or hurting anybody, but that's just my opinion.
So, Counselor Pike, are you okay with the four thousand dollar reduction?
Come back to me.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Weinstein?
No.
Counselor Nazaro?
It's like one point two percent, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Levy, yes? Counselor Burns, Counselor Bowden?
Two thousand.
It's yes or no on the four first? No, okay, it's a tie, so Counselor Pike?
One wanted away.
I would say that at, at, cutting four thousand dollars, I'm just looking at the overall amount, is, is, is most of the increase, we're at, essentially, they're going from three fifteen to three twenty. So they're asking for five thousand. Five thousand is, is close to the rate of inflation, taking four thousand off that, five thousand is well under the rate of inflation. And on that basis, I'm saying no, rather than on an individual and amount.
Counselor Bowden said two thousand. Are you, oh, side the other way, so give me time. Counselor Bowden says yes on two. Counselor Burns on two?
Come back to me.
Counselor Levy on two?
I wanna spend more.
So no?
I'm being facetious.
Okay, so two, yes?
I'm five with two.
Two, Counselor Weinstein, reduction of two thousand?
No.
Counselor Thompson, reduction of two thousand?
Yes.
Counselor Pike, reduction of two thousand? It passes, so reduction of two thousand dollars.
I have a quick question.
Sure, wish I would.
You brought up the heating system, Counselor Bowden, did that come out of maintenance or CIP? How much was the heating system fixed? Seems like a large system that we should be saving money to fix as opposed to pulling out of operating.
We'll find out this winter how well we're, how well it's going to do.
But when we paid for it, what did it come out from?
The funds that the town holds for the library.
Capital reserve.
No.
The trust.
Okay, libraries work this way. Whatever you appropriate for libraries, I move into a fund, they can spend it the year in which we move the money or any year into the future. So if they underspend their appropriation, it stays in that fund. So basically, they paid for the heating system out of the accumulation of unspent funds from...
Their fund balance.
So for years, I remember when we were first on the council, it was like, generally around here, like three hundred, but they'd spent like two thirty, so that was accumulating?
Yes.
So this isn't handicapped in...
Okay, what's in that now?
It's...
So how much cash do they have on hand?
The town may have like twenty or thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, so they're not sitting on a like, this boatload of money like they used to?
They're not sitting on a boatload of money.
Okay.
They've been pouring their money back into the building.
Okay.
You know, like new windows, new carpet.
Right.
New heating system.
Okay. So the building maintenance person or that we're talking about hiring, or the facilities manager? Would the, like, hiring a facilities manager also involve the library facilities? 'Cause they seem to be having so many challenges.
I hope so, yes.
But they can ultimately do what they want.
Anything from the walls on the outside, from the paint out is up, is the responsibility of the town. Paint in is responsibility of the library.
Paint on the walls?
That's, that's what they do by rule of thumb.
So like what about, like, so the wiring? So like, what about, like, so the wiring would be the town?
It should be the town, yeah.
So like, we could potentially help them get ahead of maintenance, so that it's not as expensive, and like, it's proactive?
Let me, I know the library director just made a face. They fund it, we propose it, so. But we would help them do that, yes.
That doesn't seem very clear to me. Who's funding what?
For example, you, you just brought up all the fund balance they have. We would go to their fund balance if there was a large maintenance project, which is they're doing, but somebody would be overseeing that, instead of just the library director, or working with the public works, or that kind of situation. If we all needed to have an electrician at the same time, that person would do it townwide, you know, try to do large projects like that to reduce costs.
All right, thank you.
But in general, the facilities person, in theory, would be giving a recommendation to them.
Absolutely.
And then they could choose to do, like, the other night, we made a suggestion to maybe look at the, you know, the length of the sheath in there for the, so they don't have leaks.
Yeah.
They can go two feet if they want, or one foot, right?
No, because that's the outside, so it's our building, it's a building.
I actually did send that off to the engineer to look at.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
We're about, how much care?
Ten minutes behind schedule.
That's it?
Not bad.
Yeah, no?
We'd be like an hour behind.
No? So we're gonna do some of the smaller ones. The first one's on page twenty-six, it's the town council. It's level funded at nineteen thousand.
Zero it out.
Three hundred dollars. Any change on town council? Twenty-six.
Can we change anything?
You can change whatever you want.
I'm leaving zero.
So... What are general supplies?
Anytime you guys say, hey, Steve, can you buy this? We have to buy it.
What did you buy for forty-nine bucks last year?
Probably binders, or materials for books.
This wonderful buffet for lunch.
Yeah, those were actually leftover donuts.
That was for Amy.
Leftover donuts?
Amy, it's not three o'clock yet.
Very classy.
We're kinda, I mean, if we're, if we're bringing everyone else, like, this way, like, if we only spent fifty bucks last year, what did we spend two years ago for general supplies?
Do I just reduce it to a hundred and fifty?
So, two thousand fifteen, you spent four hundred and five dollars.
What?
Wow.
Two thousand fifteen, a hundred and fifteen, and two thousand thirteen, three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
What did we spend all that money on?
Chairs, coffee.
Oh, the chairs. That was the year they bought these fancy chairs.
No, 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 no. Chairs came from a different fund.
Yeah, that would have been.
Yeah, it was more to that.
I'd, make that a hundred and fifty, I mean.
Okay.
Hey, that's just me, though. I'm only one percent.
Town council, a hundred and fifty. Do I see everybody nodding their head, yes?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
We should cut ourselves, too.
Any other things on the town council?
A lot of problems.
The next, the next is the next page, is the town administrator. We're proposing a budget increase of one point nine seven percent. The two largest portion is, one is to reflect actual costs for training and staff development. The other is the increase in salary, for, which was the merit pool distribution. Other than that, there's no large increase to postage.
There'll be advertising we don't spend.
The cost of advertising is actually up.
It's skyrocketing, yeah. The problem, one of the problems we have now is that there's only one newspaper on the seacoast, so there's no competition.
Oh, those jerks.
So, we used to be able to say, okay, Foster's, we'll go to you and advertise, because you're giving us a better rate than the Portsmouth Herald. Well, now they're owned by the same company, so we only have one option.
We still required to post notices in actual, physical newspapers. That has not changed.
No, that's been a big thing for years, we've been saying that nobody actually reads legal notices in the newspaper, but.
It's still required to be.
The Newspaper Guild has a much stronger union and conquered.
What about the part-time salaries?
I've reduced that to zero. That was a substitute administrative assistant for my office, as well as planning. We're just working without it. The individual retired, and we just said, you know what, we'll work around it. It's, we may have reductions of being able to have the door open to the public, but we're usually there and be grabbed if need be, so.
Can you bring somebody over from, can you bring Sue over from?
Sue does. I mean, if, if they need to get me, they'll go to the plant, well, there's a sign usually up, say, if you need to talk to the town administrator.
Yep.
Go across the hall, or go to the clerk's office, and they'll come grab me.
Counsel Nazaro?
I just have to ask, I think this happened last year, too. For books, the department had proposed nine hundred, the town administrator proposed five hundred. Aren't you both of those people?
That was last.
I put it together.
Yeah, you put that one in.
Sounds like a Wiki, sounds like a WikiLeaks.
It is. Now, Matt looks at, that was, that's the one that Matt looks at the actuals for us, and puts, and populates that, and then.
All right.
That is an odd one, that I do change that after.
All right.
You always have, he has to purchase these books through LexisNexis, that update the laws for the saving interest for him. And you never know what they're gonna update.
Yeah.
And usually, next year should be bigger, because it's the new biennium.
Is there like a, as it flows with the biennium?
Yeah.
Like, one year they're focused on budget, another year, like, passing along?
Yeah.
Be bigger, but you're cutting it?
No, next year we should be fine, because that budget next year, year after, is all the general law.
Counselor Burns?
This question, what is dues and subscriptions go to again?
That is for the New Hampshire Municipal Association. They're anticipating a four percent increase in dues, so we're not sure yet, because their budget hasn't been passed.
Okay. Thanks.
Seeing no other lights. Communication services?
Sorry?
Communication services?
That's all the telephone costs for the town allocated by usage. And for the last year, we, we were about on budget, or just slightly over budget. So this might be okay.
What do you mean, okay? Okay to reduce, okay to leave, okay to?
Last year, the town administrator's office spent just over forty-one, well, four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. They budgeted forty-one hundred dollars, okay?
Talking about a hundred bucks.
So, I mean, how much are we gonna increase the budget by? For eighty dollars?
Twenty bucks.
Yeah, one thing you can, one thing.
I can't see it going down.
One thing the town administrator's budget is also, is the catch-all. If you look under contracted services, I budgeted two, twenty-five hundred dollars, but it was thirty-eight thousand. Because if the council says, I want a study done, that's where it's done. So. We're gonna skip to town clerk tax collector, so we're gonna skip finance and human resources, just since she's here. It's a reduction of four point four nine percent, I'm sorry. Yep, yep. It is on thirty.
Hi, Terry, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
It's a reduction of four point four nine percent. No presidential, no state election next year. Any?
Yeah, Counsel Thompson.
How is your staffing? Are you okay? You running at levels everybody's? We will be back at full staff, starting in the next week or two. Yes.
Hire new, or?
No. We had one person out of maternity leave, and we had another one, and have an incident, so she's been out.
Oh, okay.
So we've been working on a two full-time person.
The perfect storm of situations of.
Just before the presidential election.
Well, you're showing a reduction, right? But sixteen was really almost two and a half percent, a little over two and a half percent less. Right? And I'm, I just, I'm sure there's a reason. And then we're jumping because of the election?
Right, right.
But the election is falling, isn't it falling in sixteen fiscal year?
No, you're in year seventeen.
Right.
Okay.
You're, this is, I know it sounds odd, but this is year seventeen. And we're talking about budget for the year eighteen.
Okay.
So for sixteen?
Got it, I got it, I got it.
Oh, never mind.
So sixteen goes until next March, doesn't it?
Sixteen is done. Seventeen goes until next June.
So their proposal for, for fiscal year twenty eighteen is almost exactly what was spent in fiscal year twenty sixteen.
Exactly.
It's a constant without the presidential.
Right, it's a state primary and presidential. No problem here.
Any change?
I'm just looking real quick. I don't see anything that's jumping on. Elections, registration.
Not here.
That's all there. Deed research. Now, deed research was eighteen forty-two, but we, we budgeted twenty-five. Is there a, and this year, we haven't spent, we spent a hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Coffee?
So what's the deal with deed research?
So in sixteen, I had a different research company that I used, whose prices were, were much higher. And then, which is why I was budgeting at twenty-six. And I lean in April and May, which is when I spend the majority of that money, because all that money, all, once I, once I file my lean, that's where the majority of my costs come from, and that's when all my deed research takes place. So that's why it hasn't been spent for this year, because it won't, that won't get done until April or May for this year.
Okay, but sixteen's done, right?
Sixteen is done, yes.
And sixteen was about thirty percent less, or roughly, you know, I'm just doing it in my head now, but eighteen to twenty, eighteen forty-two to twenty-six hundred's how much? I gotta calculate it, it's.
What was it?
Yeah, it's like twenty-something percent, thirty percent. So I'm just asking, you know, so I, so you're saying it's, it's loaded toward the end, Terry?
Right, typically.
So I'm just wondering, does, is there any, because that's a, pretty much a constant.
Yes.
What was it, what was in fifteen, Matt?
It was, it was just over two thousand and fifteen, two thousand eighty-two, and in fourteen, it was twenty-five hundred, I'm sorry, no, I meant, twenty-five eighty-four, and in sixteen, it was twenty-six forty-nine.
What shows sixteen here is eighteen forty-two.
Fourteen.
What?
Fourteen. Fiscal year fourteen was two thousand six forty-nine. So what you're seeing is a, is the rate of liens is probably decreasing, okay? So if, if all of a sudden she sees more people go onto her lean list, then she's gonna have increased costs. So this, this kind of expands and contracts based upon the number of people who go to lean.
Lean indeed. Based on the rest of the jobs we have to do.
We need to speak up, too, because we're on TV.
Okay.
So. And counsel, too, I know we're casual, lean forward when talking.
So where do we want to go with this?
I'm just, I was just trying to figure it out. I'm just looking. In, in equipment purchase, you had twenty-five, and you spent twenty-five right on the, right on the dot?
Right, yeah, we're purchasing voting booths. We're replacing the booths out of that line item. So.
So you know it's an exact number?
We use that line item in full, and then we had some extra in an election line, and we used that for the rest. We're working on replacing the, the older booths and getting the booths slowly.
Okay.
So town clerk tax collector, we're all set? The next one is building safety.
Thank you.
Building safety, which is on page? Thirty-one. He's not here, but it's an increase of one point four percent. It's part-time salaries, it's mainly the increase in his salary that was due to the merit pool distribution. No other increases.
Why's it called building safety? This is code enforcement, right?
Yeah. Good question.
Thank you.
Good question. Now, because technically, technically, it's building inspection and code enforcement officer. Roll it together into one department, it's building safety, so you don't have to say building inspector and code enforcement officer.
Who's, who's the full-time?
That is, portion is Sue Jordan. We divide it between two departments, because she works for two.
Former officer.
Let me, let me state that, since you already went past that. Part of the town administrator's salary is in, is in water and sewer, because I'm also the administrator of water and sewer. Any issues? No. Welfare, next page. Reduction of thirteen point nine four percent.
That's been consistently going down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. If you want to just go, the next is assessing, contracted, so reduction of eight point nine percent.
What?
Yep.
This is super small dollars, I just have to ask the question. If we're contracting all of this, what are the dues and subscriptions for?
The law, state law states that every municipality must be a member of the New Hampshire Assessing Association.
What?
Yeah.
Is that a private organization?
No.
Instead of who we hire because they are?
Right, it has to be each municipality. There's two, state law requires two, I gotta check the third. I know of two definite, that you have the state, the municipality must pay their dues, Town Clerks Association and Assessing Association.
What are we mailing? Doesn't look like much.
It's not. It's, usually, it's, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, no, no, answer his question, I have something after this.
Oh. Abatement denials, abatement approvals, those kind of letters.
So, it would happen, would that happen more, like, in a year where we've done, like, this big assessment push?
No, because we do change values during the year. If you, say, if you're, if you're, if in the neighborhood, four houses go for sale, they're all assessed at two hundred, they sell for four hundred, they go in the neighborhood and bump everybody if the market's this, not correct.
But we have historically, what did we spend in twenty fifteen for postage? In twenty sixteen, we spent forty-one bucks.
We can reduce it to two hundred and fifty, or two.
Can you cover it all someplace else for forty-one bucks, really?
Yeah, we can do it, just reduce it.
I mean, also, general supplies, we don't have an office, but we're contracting it. Why do we need supplies?
We have an office, they have an office here. We contract the assessor, not the department.
So like, we're paying for his pens?
Yeah, we have, if there's a pen that's needed in the office.
I'll buy him a pen.
So we haven't bought a pen in the last three years? There's like, no money's pets out of this.
Okay, well, yeah, that's fine.
Can we cut a thousand?
Sure.
Counsel?
Can I jump in? There's a mistake I see in here. I, what I did was, for the software maintenance, it's usually predicated off the actuals for the prior year, and for whatever reason, it ended up zero in the, in here. It should be two percent additional of the seven seventy. So it should really be.
Oh.
Oh.
This should be like seventy-nine hundred bucks.
Yeah. Okay. That was my question.
So we definitely want to cut the thousand?
Yeah.
We probably should have just approved this page as it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counsel Burns?
Matthew?
I always had a question, and not, just a question. So the dues and subscriptions, three fifty, and then one fifty, and then three fifty?
We only spent one fifty three years ago.
Three fifty in sixteen, one fifty seventeen, back up to three fifty for eighteen. Just curious.
We didn't spend anything.
Go to one fifty, go to one fifty.
Okay. Sorry.
No, that's fine. With Matt's, with Matt's change, with all the changes and reductions, plus Matt's change, it's an increase of one percent, one point zero three, or seventy thousand, thirty-seven dollars.
Did, did anybody say why? I understand that they left, it was a mistake leaving out software, but why have we had no expenditures in software the last two years?
You do have expenditures in softwares. I think what it is, is my spreadsheet probably isn't pulling in the data. Basically, it trends to be about two percent each and every year, and we pay that to vision.
It is.
Appraisal.
Okay, so, so several lines are wrong here, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think we gotta know, then, if we actually spent anything, before we just say, okay, add in seventy-nine hundred bucks. Is there any?
I can assure you.
Any expenditure for yesterday?
We spend.
All of it?
Yeah, we do.
They, they religiously increase their price two percent every year.
So are.
But it's not showing up under contracted service.
It's not in sixteen, it's not in seventeen.
I know, I, I see that.
Matt, can you print a expense report for them?
Yeah.
On that line?
How much money are we talking about?
Big, but I'm busy on.
Seventy-nine hundred bucks.
Seventy-nine. Seventy-nine hundred would be the additional.
I want to go back after to, um, to the welfare for a second. I have a couple of quick questions. Well, we're done with this.
Okay. Well, I guess we're done, because Matt has to go do something, so we can go back to welfare.
Well, I, okay. I don't know if you're gonna be able to answer the question.
I got the history.
Oh, good. What was fifteen?
Oh, the total?
No, what was fifteen for, um, let's see, deal with me, I had it written down.
In the town report.
Rent. What was fifteen for rent?
Eleven thousand. Act, act, uh, we, final budget was eleven thousand, we spent twelve thousand, three hundred and five dollars.
And what was fifteen for electricity?
Electricity was, we spent zero.
Okay, and, and heat?
Heat? Zero.
Okay, so, I'm just looking at this. We spent twenty-seven out of forty-eight. And food, we budgeted fifteen, we spent nothing. We spent sixty-eight on, on rent, and it was fifteen. Do you know what the, what is the, how does the rent work on that? Is that when people need?
Somebody needs rent, they actually come in, we pay the rent.
So, so the year before it was sixty, it's, when it was sixty-eight, you said what was eleven?
Sorry?
Like, the year before it was sixty-eight, it was eleven, you said, for rent?
The year before it was sixty-eight, it was eleven.
Fifteen, yeah, and what was it in fourteen, if you have it?
We budgeted eleven in fifteen, it was actually over that, it was twelve thousand, three hundred and five. We budgeted fifteen in fourteen, it came at ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight.
Okay, so sixteen was about three, thirty-two hundred bucks lower.
We budgeted in fifteen, fifteen in thirteen, and it was ten thousand, eleven and three. So sixteen's the anomaly.
Okay, so that's why you're keeping it at ten?
Yeah.
And electricity has been very low, is there any reason it's still at a thousand?
We've been, welfare's a department that we have to fund no matter what. If somebody walks in the door and says, I have a five hundred dollar electrical bill.
Yeah.
We have to pay it. So we need to have something in there.
Well, no, I don't, I understand, but it was zero, and then it was five hundred. I'm just saying, we got fifteen. I mean, and then on food, it was, uh, excuse me, heat, it was, it's twenty-five, and it was one sixty in the year before, you said it was zero.
And heat, we've been using an outside source, we've been sending it to an outside source first. But if their funding runs out, we have to have something to.
So I'm just saying, does it have to be twenty, I mean, I'm just looking at those two lines, the, the electricity and the heat is four grand. You know, last year we spent five, six hundred and sixty bucks.
I think we, I, I don't, I think we should just leave it as is. I, welfare, I think we need to leave level funded. We've cut it a lot in the last few years.
Agree.
I have a comment too. I think.
It's gotta be there.
Huh? I'm sorry?
No.
Said it doesn't shock me.
Weinstein.
Um, I, just from my experience in the community, the needs have not decreased. If anything, they've increased. And I think that we are very, very fortunate to have, um, organizations in town that have picked up some of the slack. And have stepped up and are assisting people on a regular basis. So, should anything, um, should those organizations cease to provide the funding then, or provide the service? Then we would need to be providing that service. And so I wouldn't be comfortable cutting welfare by anymore, because I also think that when you cut it and the money's not there, you start to, to put in roadblocks, to make it harder for people to access that service. And, um, and I, I wouldn't be comfortable cutting it at all.
I'm just curious, so I can learn. What organizations are paying people's rent?
Um, the community church.
Community church does community actions, helps subsidize it.
Yep, St. Mary's has a fund. I mean, so, so basically religious organizations are stepping up.
And who's paying for electricity and heat, same?
Recommit community action in the churches.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's great, first of all, that those community organizations step up and do it. It's like, that's the reason they exist. I think it's awesome.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. And food, I mean, the, the number of families that access the food pantry on a regular basis, and the thrift store, and I think, you know, I, I just, I don't think, I don't foresee our needs going down, right.
I do have a question. Are we really just sort of waiting for Matt to get back right now, so we can have this sort of discussion?
Well, actually, we're now in water and sewer time.
Okay. I, I guess my question is, the needs increasing run counter to the brief you gave us, with unemployment decreasing for like, according to the reports, like, year after year for the last three years?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying the need, I'm, I'm going with what the economic reports say. Unemployment is down. I was able to reduce the welfare budget, I just don't think, we can't have zero in line.
But I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm actually more making the point.
Okay, it's not, it's not asking me, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, no, it's more just making the point, that Council Wyson's saying the needs are increasing, according to like, what the community organizations are facing, and I don't disagree with that. But the data we're being told is that things are getting better.
Oh, it's two point five to two point four percent.
Two point nine to two point four.
Yeah, and two point, two percent unemployment is negligible. That's, that they don't really, they consider that just a fluctuation in.
Right.
Includes people that have given up.
Right.
I don't still believe in numbers.
But just for the record, since we're talking about it, the, the, the welfare had been, I think, um, paying for things in the past.
Yeah.
That had never been really allowable.
I misunderstood.
So since we have a different person running the thing, they're, they're actually paying for things that are allowable. So there was, there were some abuses taking place in the past. When I got on the council, it was out, short of out of control. And it's been cut demonstrably over the last five or six years.
You guys just want to hit one other small one, real quick?
Yeah.
There's no increase in legal.
Cool.
And it's, that's the agree, we've, we've over expended legal, but he's not increasing the retainer fee. It's, the only time we go over it is if there's a special case, in which that's part of the agreement, so.
Yeah, I would say, I think, you know, just because I'm on a bunch of committees right now, I think having the retainer arrangement, we have a legal, is, is a tremendous thing, because people use it before we get into trouble.
It is, I will, I, I advocate for this to every other municipality. It's saved us from, some municipalities go the route of hiring an in-house attorney. And this has saved us so much money, and it's such a great relationship that, yeah. So now.
There's a town that has an in-house attorney who keeps losing million-dollar lawsuits. They're not far from us, but I won't mention that name. Come on up, Sean.
Page fifty-seven, water.
Water.
Oh, I think she, did you, did you have a question?
I don't need to know.
Because I thought you were.
I don't know, I don't know what it was. It was something on welfare, oh, on the, on the welfare. The other thing I think that the, the council or the public ought to know, is that the welfare department isn't the first stop necessarily, as far as funds go. The way the, the, the way the system is, is set up is that they will help and advocate and direct to other agencies, whether it's CCO's advocates, whether it's, you know, it turns thing, they're everything, it's here as an emergency fund, but it's, it's not the primary way that it's administered. Um, and that's not unique to Newmarket. So, I, I appreciate this budget here, I don't, I agree, I don't think it ought to be cut more necessarily. But it is, it's there as a, as a what-if. There's, there's so many other procedures set up to help people, so. That was it. Go ahead.
What, what page was it?
Fifty-three?
It's six.
I'm sorry, fifty-seven. Seven. Sorry.
Solid waste or water, sorry?
Water.
Okay. Ah, yes.
Hello, Sean, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good morning. Um, the thing about the water department is, um, this budget reflects, um, the new Macintosh well and blending facility coming online, which is to send up uncharted waters on what those additional spec. We have an estimate of what those expenses are gonna be, that they'll shake out as we operate more. Some of the challenges is, um, depending on how we operate the existing wells with the blending facility, could change the way those costs happen. For example, uh, the blending facility takes water from the distribution system, which comes from the Benetton sewer wells, and blends it with the Macintosh well. As you pump more distribution water in, that requires that water to be double pumped, which increases your electricity. Currently, the state has just approved us to pump at a thirty percent level of Macintosh well water to the, um, to the distribution order. So that would mean a higher, um, electrical cost. So, some of that stuff's gonna shake out as we, as we move ahead. The biggest part of our budget that we see, uh, the increases in, is, um, some full-time salaries, uh, retirement, uh, which is a reflection of the full-time salaries. There's an increase in chemicals. The reason there's an increase in chemicals is because we are, um, we just did a corrosion control study, um, that happened. We just got that, short, I want to say about a month or two ago. Which, um, we are gonna be now adding a new phosphate to the, um, water system. It's a food-grade product. And the, the purpose of this product is that it lines the pipes to protect people's plumbing from reaching, bleaching out into the water. So if you had some lead solder in your piping, this is to help keep that in place, so you don't get it when you drink it.
Does that have anything to do with blending, Sean?
That has to do, it, it, yes, because the water is a corrosive water source, and it has to do with the Flint, Michigan. That was the problem. They were not using corrosion control in Flint, Michigan. Uh, they banned it, and it had very corrosive water, and it was eating away at the pipes, basically what it was.
Oh. Is that the Mac well has got the corro, corrosive water?
Yes, it has.
Is that the manganese, or what's causing the corrosion, please?
It, it's the, um, it's the sodium and the chloride, it's the conductivity, it's the particles within the water that creates the conductivity.
Okay.
My wells are the same, even on my well, and I'm kind of upstream down there in Florida, but it, it does tend to run pretty corroded, and my product is helped a lot.
So we use, we're gonna be using a combination of, uh, pH control to raise the pH to make it less corrosive, and the, uh, polyphosphate to, um, to line the pipes to protect it. So, so that's why chemicals is going up, um, contract services is going up, uh, because of, um, the Mac well, we have to do substantially more testing. We actually have to do lead and copper testing to see if that leaching is happening, um, and there's a lot of testing that's involved with bringing in a water source on that. Uh, and then the, the major increases are bonds and notes, and that's for the Macintosh well.
Counsel Pike.
Yeah, I just, this is more of a general question, but when you say the Mac well has more sodium and chloride, that's, that's not in any way related, I mean, it sounds like salt. It's, it's not a saltwater intrusion story that's going on there, or?
No, it is absolutely not. Um, what was, when the engineering was done several years ago, it was found that that may have been part of the ocean at some point in time. It is not influenced by the ocean at this point in time, and that it could be, if you pump this well for a very long period of time, that could go away. The question is, is it ten years, is it a hundred years, is it two hundred years? That's, that's the question.
Right, and I, I just asked it because, you know, saltwater intrusion, I think, is, is a, you know, a big question for the community. So sometimes you'll have sodium and chloride in its, in its residual, and sometimes it could be something that's dynamic, it sounds like. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? I have some on your capital reserve.
Yes.
So I'll give you credit, that you actually, like, for each of the, like, five or six projects you have here, actually allocate a portion of the balance you have in capital reserve to those projects, so I know where your current balance is going. You're the first department that I've seen that happen. So there's the good news.
All right, get the bad.
You've only allocated nine hundred and fifty K when you've got one point, almost one, one point one eight million in your capital reserve fund. So there's a few hundred thou, there's a couple hundred thousand unallocated against these projects that you actually have on hand.
There is actually exactly a hundred and thirty thousand that's not allocated. Once you allocate all the money that we've been saving towards the vehicles. I actually have a breakdown sheet with the whole.
Yep, you've got a hundred and fifty-seven thousand right now.
Yeah, I have it all broken down for vehicles, everything broken down, according to what goes to what.
So why do we have a hundred and thirty, why do we have any unallocated that's in our balance while we're asking for more?
Because several years ago, what they did was, they didn't allocate money towards things, they just kind of threw it in a big clump. And we've been slowly allocating that money, assigning that money.
So, but I guess my question is this, you have a request for three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Yes, yes.
Why is not a portion of that money, if not all of it, being allocated to the projects you're asking for money from?
Um, there is actually some projects that I'm gonna be actually, that are gonna be happening, that I'm gonna have to use some of that money for.
So why isn't it in our capital improvement?
It will be. See, this is finally, I've been slowly allocating that money and trying to figure out. The problem that I've been having is that things have been coming up so changing for the water and sewer department, that we've been trying to get that money allocated to certain things. Trust me, the needs for the water department are much more than, um, for, are much more than what is on here. And I think the, one of the biggest projects that we're gonna see coming in is the water demand study, that the council was just asking me to do. So the water demand study is gonna have to come out CIP, because there's no money in, in this, in any of my budgets.
When did, when did we ask for water demand study?
About a month and a half ago.
The council did?
Yeah.
I must have missed that meeting.
Well, it was in, it was in response to the, um, the recommendations of the master.
Yeah, there's a few things that come up that you don't, I don't think you honestly want to allocate a hundred percent of your money to every single project.
I fundamentally disagree that the taxpayers' dollars in capital reserve funds should be a hundred percent allocated against something.
Here's the reason I say that, because there are things for the water and sewer department that are gonna come up, that you're gonna need that money. Also, some of that money that, that is unallocated came in from projects that came in that are coming under.
Okay, Matt.
Big petty, petty cash.
So. Matt, are we, like, allowed to just keep, like, a balance in a capital reserve fund that's not against any capital improvement plan?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's actually recommended.
Yeah.
This, only water and sewer is the only place we do that?
No.
We, I, I don't allocate, saying, putting this huge amount in there, but there should be some percentage there, so you can be reactive to changing conditions. If you don't want to do that, that's fine, and we can change it, but I, I think it's not.
So, just real quick, philosophically, what we've done is, people used to put that, lack of a term, cushion, in the operating budget. Say if they say, well, what happens if the, the town hall roof falls off? Well, I gotta put two hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget. And we said, no, take that out of those and put it in the capital reserve funds as like our savings accounts that you need. Yes, you have projects that you know you're gonna do, but you also need additional in case there's something that comes up that we withdraw from. If not, our budget will be blown.
Well, no, I would more say that he's got six projects, like, the world falls apart, and like, one of the wells like explodes, or whatever. We say, we now need to reassess what our priorities are, like, we gotta fix the emergency, and then these like, five, seven-year-long plans, we say, we're gonna save less money to that and stretch it out like you would if you owned a house. My roof falls off my house, I go, well, you know, I was gonna, like, replace, like, I was gonna pave the driveway, but I'm now not gonna do that and fix the roof.
Which it does, I mean.
But, but we're still saying we're sitting on, we're sitting on a hundred thousand dollars that we have, a hundred and thirty that we have no plan for.
Well, there actually, there is some of that.
Okay, my only point then is, it should be in our plan.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with that, and, but I do feel that there should be, and you can direct me to do something different, that there should be amount of money in there that should be, and it should be designated for.
So my only, my point, before we went down this road, was just that, if we have a plan, if there is a plan for money, we should see that plan. It shouldn't be like, we get this capital improvement, set of capital improvement plans, and then the water department in Sean's head, we've got a plan for like, the rest of this money. Because that's what I heard you say, like, oh, we've got a plan, there's other things we're gonna do, I'm like, why don't we see it?
I don't have a plan for a hundred percent of it, but I do know where some of it's gonna go.
Okay, I'm just saying that if you know where some of it's gonna go, the budget is like, really the only opportunity we have to know, also know that, so we should see that. The, my other point was in your capital improvement plan, it seems like everything is happening in seventeen eighteen or eighteen nineteen. Like, every, there's no spread, there's no, it all stops in twenty.
I think the biggest thing where I'm having the challenge, and the water department and sewer department have done so much capital improvement in the past few years. I mean, it's been, I don't know, it's been crazy. And I think it's to the point that we're gonna have to stop and reevaluate where we're going. And I had a charge back. And I had a charge back in two thousand and ten, I don't believe, I don't, I believe you might have been on the council at that time.
Right, right.
You gave me a charge of five projects to get done. And we tried to make all those projects spread out like this, as I told Steve, and what happened, they all hit, like, at once. And it's been crazy.
Some failed from vote, some failed, and then finally, it seemed, they all passed in the same year.
I guess my, my only point is, do every single one of these have to happen in seventeen eighteen or is there any way we could spread it out to, like, have, have it in eighteen nineteen or nineteen twenty, just to, like, some little bit more of a spread, given that both water and sewer rates are going up?
Water.
I'm not asking to, like, stop the projects, I'm just saying, like, are any of these that are all happening this year gonna be happening?
But let's be clear, water rates have not increased since two thousand and ten.
Right, I'm sorry, given the sewer rates are going up, which basically the water users are.
The most of the stuff that's happening is on the water side, that, that's the biggest piece. Um, the, but yes, the water rates haven't gone up and keep in mind that the water does come just from the water users, not from the tax rates.
Totally, it's all, it's all rate pairs.
Yes, so there has to be, I mean, the next big thing that has to get done for the water department is the Bennett Sewell has to get done. The other piece that, because of the drought and our water woes, the other piece is developing more water.
And that's what this study is about. This study is to evaluate the needs and potential, um, areas that water may be accessible. That's my understanding. And a buildup for the town.
Those are the two biggest things that need to get done for the water department right now.
I, I get it, I'm just more asking, in the capital reserve projects that all are happening in the next two years, one to two years in here that you have, do they all have to happen this year or is there a way to spread it out more?
As I look at.
So Bennett, like, maybe right Bennett Sewell maybe has to happen this year, maybe, like, it can happen next year, like, I just don't know.
And the, definitely the purchase of, of another water source should happen.
Okay, what about the, the water tower? Does that have to happen next year?
The water, but that's just the purchasing property. That doesn't do anything with the water tower itself.
So again, does that have to happen next year or, like, what is our long-term plan? Do we have a plan for building a new tower?
I'm not understanding, why are you trying to delay these things?
I'm not, cause what I'm trying to say is.
The tower is actually already designed.
My, the point I am making is that.
I understand what you're saying.
If you look at his capital improvement plans.
He wants to spread everything out.
Everything is happening, like, in a two-year window, like, and then nothing. Like, my point is, does everything have to happen right here?
So in other words.
Or, like, is there a way to spread it out a little bit?
But is it because there's not enough money there now or, I mean?
I think the biggest thing is when I started to put this plan together a few years ago, it was the plan that was built off that two thousand and ten and I knew, and so that was the plan and how it was built back along. Then I knew after this date that we were gonna have to sit there and down and identify where our next priorities were gonna be.
Right, I mean, the reason, I'm, the reason I'm kind of confused a little bit, I mean, I went on the, the Torah we did with it, it was very useful and I, I mean, a lot of these seemed like we, we don't wanna delay a lot of these projects because the, the tower, as you said, is, 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 you know, that, there is some, there is some need to move these things in a, in a, in a reasonable timeframe.
So.
What, what do we gain from?
So I guess, the point is probably, my point is probably brought to a head the best when you look at his vehicle capital reserve. Everything, like, the year per, the year the vehicle is purchased, everything stops, there's no more long-term savings, like, everything is thought of, is, I feel like it's all conceptualized in a very, like, this point in time and then, like, there's nothing past that. Once we hit this, then we'll start talking about what's past that. So for your Water Ford pickup, you're purchasing it next year and then you stop contributing anything to capital reserves, whereas we should be putting, like, a little bit in for the next year.
I actually have it showing, putting money in. I think the biggest thing.
We don't.
Yeah, well, in mine, I do.
There should be one plan, though, that we see.
No, it should, it should be on there. Ideally, what has happened is we, I've told the, the board that we are not purchasing a new vehicle. I recommended that we continue to put money in, um, to that because the vehicle does not need to be replaced at this time.
I'm just.
I, I get.
My whole point is that I feel like we're looking at this year, maybe next year, but there's, like, nothing, there's nothing that I see in these plans, or maybe there's another plan, maybe for water, you've got a plan past next year, but then there should be something that has capital reserve contributions starting in three years as opposed to this year and next year. Like, I feel like everything is very, like, focused on the next year or two, there's no past that.
Right, but in, in this case where you mentioned the pickup, and if I'm understanding what happens is if you say you acquire a pickup in two thousand and four, twelve years later, the pickup is working fine, but you've allocated enough money to CIP to buy a new pickup, you can replace that when the time comes, wouldn't you stop, you would keep the old one going as long as it's.
Totally agree, but, like, is he projecting he's gonna keep that until twenty twenty three? Or should he be starting to save money now, like, in twenty twenty?
Well, as long as he's got enough money, yeah.
Council, I guess what I see is that the CIP plan has come a long way in the last couple of years, it's been great, but I see your vision, we should be looking the next five years, not just the year-to-year so that it's a five-year stamp rather than a one-year stamp.
Right.
I don't disagree with you and I think we're getting there. Um, a couple of years ago, I think the CIP was not what it is today and, and I think you're right on the mark, we should be stamping a five-year plan.
I agree, I think we should.
No, I don't disagree.
Water, any, cause we've got five minutes for sewer, any reductions on water? Okay. Sewer, wastewater, next page. Increase of eighty-five point four five percent, like, I just wanna say that. I just want, I just want.
The target's over.
We all know why, we all know why.
Um, yeah, I, going down through it again, uh, the bottom line is we're starting a new, a new wastewater treatment facility. It's much more complex, it has a lot more equipment, um, and we have to start paying the bonds and notes on it. Um, that's where the biggest, I think, uh, the bottom line is, is, um, you're talking out of that million-dollar increase, you're talking almost, what, six hundred, seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, it's just in bonds and notes. Um, it's gonna cost, take more electricity, uh, there's gonna be more solids that we actually, it's gonna cost a haul off and do something with. Um, yeah, it's, that's the bottom line.
And it just, just a good chance to explain bonds and notes a little bit on the payment schedule? I don't know, there may be another one coming up. The first year you pay interest only, the second year is when the big impact is, is when you have both interest, principal and interest. So just, so everybody understands that, it's not the first year that hits you, it's the second year that hits you.
Counsel Weinstein?
Um, I just had a question about chemicals.
Yes.
That's going down pretty significantly and with the new plant, I, I guess it surprised me that the chemicals were gonna go down.
The biggest thing right now is we're trying, um, when we put that money in last year, we were looking to run two facilities right now.
Right.
And the biggest thing that I saw in the reduction was for, was for hydrochloride, um, because the water we're actually putting out is actually cleaner, um, and we should use less of my salt right because of.
Spring, we in, is this, are we on fifty-six? Solid waste?
Yeah, I'm sorry, fifty-eight.
Okay. Do we do solid waste already?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, but I could probably get that.
No, that's okay.
Date still April for the, the new plant to come online, do you think?
It, it should be coming on, I don't, I foresee, yes, probably around April. The original target, it could actually come on in February, but it's being pushed back.
Counsel Mazara?
I'm going back to your CIP. You've got one point one six million in the CIP, according to your capital, or to your capital reserve fund. According to your capital improvement plan, the only balance you have allocated is three hundred twenty thousand. Is that accurate or not?
Oh, does that, that may not include the, um, North Main Street, which it should be in there, it's already, the money was already set aside at five hundred fifty thousand.
You've already appropriated that.
So five fifty and three twenty, so now we're looking at eight ninety, nine hundred thousand. So you've got about two million funds, or sorry, two hundred thousand unallocated in your capital reserve.
So I have.
Seventeen?
Three hundred and twenty that's already been put in for the priority pump station.
Yep.
And I have six fifty-four.
Looking at here.
I'd have to relook at that, but I believe, I don't have the number down here for Main Street, I think it's actually when I went in front of the council, there was six hundred thousand allocated and actually we don't need that full six hundred thousand.
All right, so, but you're still looking somewhere between, like, you're asking for two hundred seventy-five thousand.
Yep.
There are, there is, like, around two hundred thousand unallocated in sewer capital reserve.
I'm showing ninety-two unallocated, I'm showing one point one six seven nine ninety for the balance and I had sewer projects at nine twenty.
Okay.
And then I had trucks for a hundred fifty-four nine forty.
Ah, the trucks, okay, the trucks are, okay, you're right, the trucks.
Ninety-two, so there's actually less in the sewer balance than there is in the water.
Okay, so you have two capital improvement projects, though, where you're, like, pulling zero from any balance you have in there. And again, they're happening in the next two years and there's nothing beyond that.
Well, that's the question of, should there be some money set into, in, like, a hundred thousand or fifty thousand, what should be left?
Again, I'm just making my point again.
Yeah.
And I wish Steve's here or someone, again, we're only looking the next two years, we're not looking beyond that. And I think a great example is in the vehicles, your sewer drain vac on, three hundred twenty thousand dollar vehicle.
Yep.
Bought in twenty-four, replaced this year, we're putting in money this year for it and then not saving anything for something that we are gonna have to replace at some point.
Now, that, that vac on, we're actually looking to save some money on that. The vac on, as we brought to the CIP, Rick and I did this year, um, we're actually looking at reconditioning the one we have. And we're actually looking to put a plan ahead to the committee to say, it's three hundred twenty thousand for a new one, we can renovate the one we have for a hundred and fifty, and then that money can go towards something else.
So why are we, if you think that we're gonna do this for less, why are we adding seven hundred three hundred dollars to our capital reserve fund this year?
We have not finalized that yet, we are working on that right now.
Okay, then why aren't we planning until we finalize this plan that in twelve years we're gonna have to buy another three hundred twenty thousand dollar vehicle, we should be saving money every year thereon out for it?
Well, I don't disagree with you, that's, like, as I said in the previous, it should be carried over.
Okay.
I'm not disagreeing with you on that, but I just, Rick and I are working on something to save some money and if that happens, that frees money up toward, to go to another project that possibly could.
All right, thank you.
I don't know who hit what, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Thompson?
It may have been ahead of me, I only just hit my button, am I the only one on or did somebody else?
No, you're good.
Um, Counsel Mazara, I just wanted to ask, are you saying that you want him to contribute less to the capital reserve in fiscal year eighteen instead of two seventy-five, bring that down by, say, whatever number, ninety-two thousand? Are you saying you wanna see that ninety-two thousand, it's okay, it's two seventy-five that he wants to fund it for, but just take it on out with the trucks, which?
I'm saying that we should have a, capital improvement plans that go beyond the next two years.
Yep.
And as, and that I think Sean gets, but, like, I feel like I've been beating this drum for a while and I haven't seen it change too much, not just sewer, I'm talking overall.
Yeah, no, that's true.
And I personally think that every dollar in the capital reserve fund should be allocated to a project.
Right.
And then when something comes up, we say we're reprioritizing. We shouldn't be sitting on money in a capital reserve fund, we should be saying, there's a plan for it all and we recognize we need to be nimble and change that plan when something higher priority comes up.
So you're not, you don't have a problem with, with the line item per se in the request of two seventy-five?
I, I mean, I think it could be less, but I'm not gonna, like, judge that one mill.
Okay.
Are there any reductions on?
I just wanna ask, ask a question.
Yeah.
Full-time salaries.
Yes.
How many people are you adding people full-time?
We added somebody.
When? Just now, this year?
It got added, it was supposed to be in, um, I thought it was in last year, which, it was around May, it was around May or June of this year, of this past year.
So which fiscal year would that have been in?
We added the position last year.
Last year.
So, so sixteen.
But we couldn't find anybody until.
So, so here's my question, if we added someone in sixteen, I'm just looking at wastewater full-time salaries, it says.
I can answer, I know what you're gonna ask. The position wasn't filled because of, we couldn't find anybody until fiscal year seventeen.
Okay.
That's why there's a difference between the two, the actual and versus the budgeted.
Cause they budgeted two oh nine and they only spent one seventy-four in sixteen.
And that's because we couldn't fill the position till the end of the year.
And you're sure that end of the year went into seventeen?
Yeah. Matt?
Yeah, they, we budgeted the full position in sixteen and, uh.
What was the salary, do you know roughly?
We budgeted about forty thousand.
Plus Ben, yeah, forty thousand there.
Okay, so, so if you added forty thousand, that'd be about roughly what the original budget was, which was about two ten for sixteen. And then seventeen, we budgeted two thirty. Okay, which is twenty grand more than that, and then next year we're proposing two forty-seven, so can you just sort of reconcile all that?
Pay, uh, increases in salary?
Okay.
Part-time in there by mistake.
In, in.
I know the part-time went away for nine grand, yeah.
In, in fiscal year seventeen, we added the merit pool for the water and sewer fund into their own budgets. In the prior year, it was commingled in the general fund, so we just took that and separated it. That's the twenty thousand.
Well, okay, I'm just saying, it's going from two oh nine, if you added a forty thousand dollar salary, it would be two ten, right?
Yeah. So in.
Original budget two sixteen, Matt, was budgeted, hold on a second, was budgeted two oh nine. Sixteen, they spent one seventy-four. They didn't fill a forty thousand dollar salary because they didn't fill it till the end of the year, right? That's the, that was what was said.
All right, I'm, in seventeen, we added one position and the merit pool.
Okay.
Okay, in eighteen, we're carrying that same one position and merit pool.
How much is the merit pool?
Twenty thousand.
So sixty grand between the salary and merit pool?
Yes.
Okay, so if you took.
Person in credit, we're full-time, we have nobody in part-time.
If you took sixty grand, I'm just saying, if you took sixty grand and looked at the actual from sixteen and added it to one seventy-four, you're not at two forty-seven.
Two forty?
Just asking. It's actually two thirty-four, which is about a fourteen, uh, the fourteen, uh, I mean, rough, rough numbers, fourteen thousand dollar delta.
Hold on one second. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, the, there was, the position was, this additional position was in the sixteen-year budget. I have a listing of all the employees, if I add it in, I'm, I'm there at the two oh nine. So, but they hired them at the end of sixteen.
Okay, so let me do this one more time, Matt. I took the one seventy-four, that was the, that was the actual for sixteen, I added Okay, so let me do this one more time, Matt. I took the 174. That was the, that was the actual for 16. I added 40. And then I added 20 for your merit pool. Cause that's what you said, the salary was 40, the merit pool is 20, correct? So that's 60 grand. I'm just asking if you added 60 grand to 174, you're at 234.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to figure out how we're at 247 for 18.
Well, for 18, you also have increases in salaries because of the merit pool. And that's it.
Cause there's two, when you talk about merit pool, there's two different things. There's one, there's the previous year's increase, plus there's a replenishing of it in the following year.
I added that in. I added the 20. I added.
You're adding 20, but you have to do that, you've.
Compounded.
You're compounding it. Because we have to replenish it to do, to hand out merits the next, in the following year.
So the merit pool goes from 20 to 40?
There's the.
One year, the next year.
The first year's merit pool should be about, so maybe about 20. Maybe in June, you'd expect 10. This year, next year, you have the full 20.
This time.
This year.
Yeah, but you still have to say that's not sure.
It should be in a separate line, first, second of all.
I, I don't know, I'm, I'm.
Merit pool.
I'm confused, but that's okay.
You know, tent away staff increases after you get rid of the second.
Right.
I'm just saying, the numbers aren't quite reconciling to me. Just out of curiosity, for the merit pool, if you put away 20 and you only spend 10, right, cause the merit pool is for performance?
Yep.
Right? Well, you wouldn't put another 20 on top of the 10, right? You'd go 10, you'd add 10.
You add 10 to the salaries, then you replenish the merit pool at the probably level funding.
Yeah, so it'd be at the 20. If you spend 10 the previous year and you had.
If you spend 10, you put 10,000, 10,000 in salaries. Merit pool separate line would be 20,000. Because the next year, you may give out $20,000 worth of merits.
Okay, so, if you had 20 in a merit pool and you spent 10 of it, okay?
Yeah.
The next year, you would add 10 because you only use.
To the salary line.
Yes, and you'd add 10 to the merit pool to make it 20.
No, you leave it at 20.
Cause it doesn't, the merit pool isn't like a capital reserve, it doesn't sit there building, it just goes away.
It goes away.
At the end of the year.
After a couple of years, your merit pool may go to 35.
Oh, I see. So you just zero it out?
Yeah, you have to zero it out. At the end of the fiscal year, everything gets zeroed out.
Have you been spending the whole merit pool?
Over.
For the most part, I think what you're gonna find, especially in the sewer, is there's gonna be an increased need for higher levels, levels of certification, which result in higher merit.
Okay, and the health insurance is going from an actual of 62, which I understand was a little bit low because you didn't hire that extra person. You had budgeted 87, which would have probably been there for the person if you had hired him. And now you're going to.
97.
A buck. It's 100,000.
No, 97.
Oh, you cut it, okay.
It's an actual, 10% increase. That's, we just received our guarantee maximum rate increase. I'm actually hedging our bets. The guarantee maximum rate increase is 10.9. Traditionally, it's gone lower. I only budgeted 10.
When I built the budget, I used 12%.
I said, knock it down to 10. So if, if rates come in at 10.9, I have to find 0.9% healthcare across the board in the budget.
Okay, and the heat and the oil, uh, last. You budgeted 30 in 16. That doesn't have any employees associated with it. You spent 12. And that was last winter, right, I'm guessing? So that was a, you know, pretty warm winter. Then we increased the budget this year to 35. You've already spent 12 on heat and oil this year?
It's part of the process.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
It, we use heat and oil to heat the, some of the tanks to.
Dry out.
Not to dry out, but to, to reduce the amount of which.
Explain the process.
Alright, so it's a biological process. So we have a digester, which we pump our solids, waste solids from our primary and secondary clarifiers. So it takes this, we heat it up, we mix it, and it actually reduces the total amount of the solids by about 40%. So in that tank, it's kind of like a human being, the bugs in there consume the food. We have to keep it at about 96 degrees. It's like a human being. And if you add too much food, what do you have to add? Alka-Seltzer. You know? Too loaded, you know? But that's, that's the bottom line, that's how it is. So then, what we do from those solids there, then we take the solids and we actually reduce them because we take those and we pump them over to about 2 or 3% solids. Now it's about 4% solids. Then we take them over and we process them more to about 20% solids. Because then that gets hauled off to get to a landfill or it gets reused.
Goes to Mr. Bishop.
But you don't wanna, you, you wanna get those solids as dry as you can. Because you don't wanna pay for hauling water. So what's happening, yeah, so that's the bottom line of it.
So that's going, we're gonna be using less of that in the future?
We have a new building that we also have to heat, so yes, we are planning on using less of that in the future.
Okay. Okay.
Any changes to sewer?
Totally confused.
Capital improvement plan, capital, sorry, we did planning first, this real, shouldn't be that.
Thanks a lot, Sean.
Thank you.
Planning?
Long-term planning.
Planning is 35. Uh, it's an increase of 2.88%. I'm just giving a, just a general overview. Well, you should have told me before, yeah. My budget, my budget proposed.
Right here, Mr. Angel was part of the process.
My budget proposed is 126,215 dollars. And the increase is 1.86 in full-time salaries. Again, that's shared between two individuals. 25% in general supplies and a 50% increase in advertising, as we said, there's a general increase in advertising.
So was there a different number, Matt?
Can I explain? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The department proposed a budget of 136,215 dollars. And in the table, it's shown here that that's an 11.4% increase, and that figure is incorrect. The table that was used to calculate the percent change under FY 2017 did not include my original budget that was approved last year. It included $10,000 in contracted services. So if you add in the 10,000 and you do the calculation, the actual increase that the department is proposing is a 2.6% increase. And Mr. Angel was part of the discussions with me, where we took the $10,000 from the planning budget because we weren't using it for a specific project. And that money was taken out of my budget last year and used to reduce and, you know, cover overages and that sort of thing. And Mr. Angel was part of that process and.
So what is that on, so Matt, are you trying to say that 17 was supposed to be 120?
What's in fiscal year 17 is what was approved at town meeting.
Right.
Okay? So it, it's minus the $10,000 for contracted services, okay? When I look at the formula for the town administrator proposed, it compares his number to what was approved at town meeting. So the 2.88% increase is accurate.
The council, the council.
But my proposal is inaccurate because it doesn't include.
Hold on. The budget that's proposed to the town council is the town administrator's budget. The $10,000 was reduced by the town council and the town administrator because we entered, we increased the contributions to the master plan by $10,000. We moved it from one to the capital reserve funds. It was running in the operating budget annually.
Budget to budget, the 11% is correct.
Correct.
Is the wrong number right? 136 was your proposal?
It was taken out of my budget. It was in, in the budget and because I hadn't spent it, it was taken out.
Now, the council reduced your budget by $10,000 last year.
At the beginning of the year?
Yes. Yes, they did. Yeah.
I guess I don't understand that. But be that as it may, what I'd like to recommend is if that $10,000 be reinstated in the budget proposal, and so we'll have some funds available for contractual services. The planning board is working on some very important projects this year, including some zoning changes that are being considered and have been recommended by the economic development committee. And there may be a need to bring in a consultant who worked with the economic development committee to come and help defend that proposal and answer fiscal and marketing issues related to it. Also, the planning board is very interested in working on developing some design guidelines. And that money could be used to start a process by, we are, we've developed some guidelines and can move that process forward. So I guess I would like to just suggest if the council could reconsider that and reinstate the 10,000. It was in my budget in 2016. And I would appreciate that. Overall, it's a level funded budget. There's two exceptions. And I think Mr. Fornier alluded to it earlier, that there's been major increases in the advertising costs. And the planning board, everything we do for planning boards, subdivisions, site review, zoning changes, we have to have legal notices. And the prices have actually increased from almost 100-fold in the last year. We had, used to, you know, have bills for $75 for the little legal ad. And now we've seen them go up to as, as much as $150. And part of that is additional fees that they're charging for online, online services as well. So that's where you have a 50% increase in that line. And it's just a.
Can I just stop right there, Diane? Are you mandated by state law to do online? Hold on, online advertising or only on, in the physical paper?
We're not, it's not online, but.
You said online was.
It has to be a public notice that's legally given.
She said online went on.
Let me, let me refer, answer this. The billing, the service that's provided, you can't pick and choose. Seacoast Online says, you're gonna buy this notice, it's going online and it's going, they're basically trying to justify their increase by saying, oh, we're gonna add this service of online. You don't have an on. You have no choice. You can't say, well, I don't want the online. No, that's the advertising right now, the legal notices.
They just know the towns have to do it, so they got us against the wall.
Legal notices are different than commercial notices. We have to have, we have that back page of the paper that, like, the classifieds. And they put that in there and they say, yes, this is your billing right now. And oh, to offset it now, we try to entice us, it's in line, it's online.
Okay.
And then the other increases in general supplies. And, you know, we've, we are, we present reports that need to be printed. And we have certain, you know, copying expenses related to that, so that's why there's an increase there. So with that, do you have any internal questions that you may have?
Thompson, Pike, and Nizarro.
Contracted services for the $10,000, I understand, do you feel like you have a way to handle that as you are this year without that specific 10,000 in that line item?
Yeah. I could find it somewhere else. Cause if, if it's related to planning and it's, especially with the zoning, probably find the funds in the economic development line or somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
So, that project would not stop. If they, if they need a consultant, we would find it.
Okay, thank you.
Pike?
Yeah, it was related to the same thing. I think there is a fair amount. When we look at, you know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there is a considerable amount of work that's being generated from the future land use master plan chapter. And it would be nice to keep those moving. And we're already, feels like the zoning change process is fairly slow, so.
And we have money for zoning. Once we get to the capital reserve funds, we've been contributing that money there because one year you may have a year that you only use 5,000, and next year you may need 15. So if you contribute 10 each year, you're gonna have, I know you don't, I know this goes against what you want, but we're gonna have some overlap there.
Right.
That you could use it.
You could use it for these purposes?
No, only for the master plan.
Only for the master plan, but.
We're talking about implementation of the master.
Right. This is not for the master plan itself, it's for the implementing.
Right. And I think we, we could find consulting money for that.
Okay.
I might suggest, not to cut you off, Phil, I might suggest you have an attorney who specializes in real estate law. So if you did need help with an ordinance, there's no reason Sean couldn't help write the ordinance. Just as a thought.
John Rowde.
Yeah. And.
As a planner, I write the ordinances, I submit them to the town.
Attorney.
Attorney, for their review, to make sure that it's in the correct legal form and so forth. So we do that as a normal.
Well, I'm saying if you needed help.
Oh, he does, yeah.
Okay, cause, cause they said that they might need the consultant to come back up. So I'm saying Sean might act as that.
Yep.
Anyway. Councilor Nizarro.
You said you want contract services money for design guidelines?
No, that's something that is a high priority for the planning board at this point. And part of this comes from, well, number one, we made major investments in our downtown. Our downtown is looking great. I know our construction project has been a little bit slow. But I think there's an interest in seeing that the development that occurs, private development that occurs in the downtown is of a high caliber, a high standard, and will reflect the architectural historic character that we have worked so hard to create and as part of our, our investments that we've made. And we need to protect those.
Does the planning, does the planning board approve those, or does the council have any say?
Design guidelines?
Yeah.
It would be a change in the ordinance. So first, the planning board has to, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, what, what would be suggested is that they be included in the planning board's site review regulations, which.
So that's an ordinance, so the council approves it?
No, it is, it is the purview of the planning board to develop design guidelines as part of site plan review.
Yes, that's correct. If, I wasn't sure if it would be the change in the zoning.
Is it the wrong for planning board?
Yeah.
We wouldn't recommend it as a zoning change because of the process that would, you'd have to go through to get some kind of reconsideration.
But we don't have a historic district downtown, right?
We do not.
No, no.
But you would force something on people that live or work downtown that the rest of the town does not have to adhere to.
There is, what is being recommended in our future land use plan, which was adopted by the planning board in July, is that we focus on having design guidelines for the Route 108 corridor. So it would include the downtown as well as the industrial park area. Planning board is currently grappling with the plan. There's two sites that are gonna be developed at the entrance to the industrial park. And there's concerns about how that design will fit in to the character of the area. Of course, we have the Gulf Course project across the street, which, which has been very successful. And we wanna preserve the character of that area.
When you say design guidelines, are you saying like, so those things in Forbes Road would have to look like downtown?
No.
And one, one thing too, and this is the benefits of having a guideline versus an ordinance. In ordinance, you can't change the law.
Correct.
The law is the law. You have to go to the zoning board to get a variance. Guidelines, you go to the planning board and say, you know what, I appreciate your guidelines, but this is the reason why it doesn't fit. Can, will you please approve it as this?
The planning board still has to tell the private individual, you're allowed to do this on your land.
And again, that's the planning board's, as a separately elected board, has a purview to do so.
And the first step is to develop the guidelines. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we want the industrial park to look like the historic mills downtown. And that's the challenge that the planning board is faced with, that we need some design assistance from an architect and someone trained in these principles to help us develop the guidelines and help us so that we can set up the capacity to do the applications in the future, so that it can be done efficiently. So that's what the planning board is interested in doing. Discussion stage with the committee, nothing's been brought forth yet, is what they're talking, looking to do. We may need some help with that. It's not really an easy charge.
Money-wise, though, we'll find them the money to get the help they need.
Councilor Pike?
Yeah, and I would just add that we did have one situation where it was, it was not in the, not in the downtown, but where there was a project that came in. And it, it, it's useful to be proactive. Because if, as you have increased density and if you have a, a look that an established neighborhood has that may not be on 108, it's good to have some leverage so that, you know, some, some recommendations, some room to negotiate so that it's going to fit with the neighborhood and not, not be greatly out of line with that. With the densities that we have. And we have other parts of the town that have a certain, a look to it. So I think, I think it's, nobody's made decisions, but it is worthy of some consideration because it's much easier to do it ahead of time than it is to try to deal with it last, afterwards.
Councilor Burns?
This is not in regard to the design guidelines. I just had a question. I'm just trying to understand the dues and subscriptions. So in, it's allocated in 2016 was 8,345, but used was 490. And then the same number in, for 17, used 400, and then we've upped it. So maybe, is the 15 and 14 numbers might help me understand that?
We, every year, we requested the amount from the Strat Regional Planning Commission. And again, this year, because of interests of making up shortfalls and covering the budget, I was asked to push the expenditure into this fiscal year. So therefore, that's why it shows that we only spent 400.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
8,500 is the correct amount for what we, we spend at Strat Regional Plan.
Okay, alright, so that's, it's gonna get into there.
So that the money should be actually spent for the dues for the fiscal year that the benefit is provided to us.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
To that point, what did we spend in 14, 15, Matt?
In 2014, we spent 8,631. And 2015, it was just a dollar shy of 5,000.
Dollar shy of 2,000?
8,000.
8,000, okay. So that's about the number.
Thank you.
Any changes to planning? Contributions to capital reserve funds.
I would like to invite Mr. Simon up to join me. He's the vice chairman of the capital improvements committee.
That is page.
I invite you to the page, ma'am.
What page?
That is on page 52.
Thank you.
I am racking five, recommending, not racking, 590,115 dollars. Increase of 15.04%. The total increase is $15,000 in compensated absences, which is when an individual retires, we go to this fund to withdraw it to offset any vacation sick earned time they have may built up. built up. Reasoning we're, we're doing this, to replenish it. We have $330,000 roughly liability on the books. That's not gonna happen. That's if we shut down, and we have to pay everybody, you know, walking out the door. But we do have a number of individuals who, who are eligible for retirement. So we are trying to rebuild that fund sooner than later, 'cause we don't, if not, then we will be liable by hitting the general fund. Everything else was level funded, which was not the recommendation of the capital improvement committee. As the council knows, the capital improvement committee recommends to the town administrator a capital improvement plan. That, I, I benefits the needs of the departments and the capital improvement committee versus what I believe we can afford, and that's where we came up with this figure.
You're not very far off. It was minor.
Well, and I think that's one other thing. The department had proposed is not what the capital improvement committee proposed.
Correct.
Capital, if you look at the capital improvement plan, it's closer to 1 point.
At, at the time I built the budget, I didn't have, the plan was not out, so I had to make my best guess.
It's still up about 80 grand.
Trying to allow that.
From this year.
Yep.
So it's not like...
No, yeah, expended.
Is that what?
If you look at this year's original budget, 512, if I'm looking at the right page...
575.
575, 115.
Then what, what page?
That's the right page, just one line over.
Yeah.
Original budget.
No, I'm looking at original budget, actual expenditure for 16.
16.
I'm looking at, when I say this year, I mean...
Yeah, why is there...
From what we've just gone through.
There should be no difference.
It's almost an $80,000 difference, so it's not like...
17.
Actual expenditures, we've expended, we have not contributed to the recreation facilities of 18,166.
Yeah, I did notice that, so...
And a $50,000 to building improvement, we haven't, we haven't contributed there.
But we're still in the year.
This is...
Not only contributed to these...
That's what I'm saying. This should, this is a, this is just a bookkeeping thing. Day one, it should flip from one to the other.
I'm only looking at 16, that's why I'm saying, actual expenditure, it said, isn't 16 over?
16 is over.
So 16, we spent 512, we budgeted 512, are you saying those numbers are right?
No, those, those numbers are correct.
So all I was saying was, if those numbers are right, we're at 590 on the proposed budget from the administrator, which is almost an 80,000 dollar range.
17 should be 575 and 575, that's...
Right.
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at where we are today from the, from where we spent.
Today, we're, today, we're at 517,115. This should be a transfer of 575,115 from the general fund of the capital reserve funds. That was what should be expended.
517?
575, 115.
I'm thoroughly confused.
To answer some of your questions, 50,000 was added for building improvements, okay?
We're right, we're right.
And it was added in 17.
50,000, you said?
Yes.
Was added to building improvements when?
In 17.
Yeah.
And carried forward into 18. So there's 50,000 of your 80,000 question.
Okay. And then we're going another 30.
The second, then we go to recreation facilities, 18,666 dollars was added.
So there's a 12 difference.
The next is a $2,000 difference of $48,000 for the origin, for police vehicles.
10.
The next is a, stormwater management went from 50 to 75. McAllen Dam went from 50 to 75. I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, after 50 to 75, so there's another 50.
McAllen Dam went from 50 to 75?
One thing, capital reserves funds, there are no, this is not a budget versus actual, this is an automatic, whatever is appropriated is expended, there's an error on the budget.
On the, between the expenditure.
Right. Anything that's appropriated to go to a capital reserve fund must go into a capital reserve fund. There can't be any fungibility between those.
Counselor Nizarro?
So you just brought in McAllen Dam went 50 to 75, but when I look at their capital improvement plan, there were, it's 50 across the board. So why...
That's what we, that's what's being recommended by the department and was recommended by the CIP committee.
So why are we adding...
We can reduce it. I, my thing was, I'd rather keep it level funded to, because ultimately...
Someone put thought into this plan.
I did.
Into this plan?
And, no, 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 into the budget.
I know, but, I know you didn't have...
The 75,000 came from me before the plan was issued.
But the plan itself is asking for 50.
That's right.
Yeah.
We can reduce it by...
So I'm gonna assume that they put thought into this?
We can reduce it by 25,000.
The, I had a second point, but I've lost it. Go back.
I understand, one, one thing you understand, the dates of the CIP do not match up to the dates of the budget. When the, try to put, the CIP doesn't have to submit, the CIP to the town administrator till almost after the fact that I have to submit the budget to the council.
Like, I'm not complaining about that, it's more that, like, I get that, right?
Yeah.
That he didn't, he just had to come up with his best guess.
No, but then it comes to me. I didn't get the, I had to submit the budget to the council prior to getting the budget from the CIP, so that means I have to, we go by level funding. I tried to level fund it. So if, and again, we can reduce it.
I'm saying that they're asking for less, so we should be giving them what they're asking for.
Well, can, can I, I just have a question, and I'm trying to understand, is, is this, is what's in the capital improvement, can we use that? You know, the next thing that's, that's gonna happen with the McAllen Dam, as soon as we get done with Long March and get our 100-year flow number, the next thing that will happen is that we'll have to go out for engineering, for the abutment, to engineer what they will be, and for stability analysis. So if we were sure, if 50,000, I'm, I'm hoping, I would hope 50,000 would do that, and that should be fine, 'cause that's gonna take us a while to move to the next step beyond that. I just wanna make sure that we would, that we wouldn't be constrained if it came in at 56, you'd still find the money to do that.
No.
Well, hold on.
This is different.
What am I getting confused about?
Well, I...
It's in the capital reserve.
Right.
There's already money there, there's 125,000 sitting there.
But yeah, what he was, what he was saying is, I would find the money in the operating budget to do it.
You'd find it in the capital reserve.
Right, capital reserve. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to, yeah, that's why I said no.
This is a well-thought-out plan, there's, they have the exact amount that's in there, they have...
But understand, I have to submit by law...
Again, I'm not, I'm not killing you.
So we can change this by going by the plan. If there's a different number in the plan today, reduce your recommendation to that number.
Well, I think we should be giving the dam committee what they're asking for.
But one, like, one thing that would be, just to finish, oh, sorry, on that, but one thing that will happen is, is that we're showing 50, 50, 50. You know, we'll probably, before you get to 19, 20, 20, 21, we'll finally get to the point where we know what it's gonna cost to fix it. And then what we haven't got allocated here, we'll go to bond, I think. So that, that's the difference, 'cause we won't, you won't be able to put 50, 50, 52, you've saved up enough for the dam. At some point, we're gonna have to do the dam, it's gonna be real expenditure. At least that's the way I understand it.
Mr. Simon?
Yeah. And I appreciate my learned counselor, Phil, who I've worked with on CIP, I disagree that everything in CIP has to have a specific behind it just for this reason. There are things like automobiles and replacing equipment, where it's, it's pretty logical to do exactly what you want, and if you're saving one of them for a year, you have a little cushion. There are things like the dam, where we're putting away seed money, because we really don't know what's happening, and we wanna make sure we have enough money for studies. And as you guys know studies like I know studies, usually a study breeds another study, okay? So you wanna be able to have money for the first three to five years, saying, I really don't know, but I think 25 or 50 years, 75 grand, if we don't spend it, we'll have a little left over, we can do something else with it, or there's stuff that's gonna happen. That stuff that's gonna happen, and I'll say stuff, because I'm a learned counsel, always happens, okay? And so in a, in a capital improvement program, though I think the vast majority should have the detailed support that you're looking for, I think there's a number, and I don't know what it is, that would be 3% to 5% of your total capital improvement, that you have sort of as a reserve cushion, for two reasons. Reason one is, nothing, when stuff happens, it usually doesn't happen that says, and I have five years to react, okay? Because in a capital improvement program, you'd say, it's gonna cost 250, if I only can put away 50 this year, I'm not gonna be able to handle that emergency for five years, okay? So having a little extra in the capital reserve, that's managed by the council, saying, maybe I have half a million dollars or 300,000, so if something blows up tomorrow and it's capital-related, we can allocate the funds. Whether you look at that in the general fund, okay, you really can't, because of the bridge between operating capital does not allow, I don't think, does it, Steve, you guys, to make an emergency?
Mm-hmm.
Can you make an emergency contribution after the budget?
No.
Okay. So you have to put capital in as part of your first step in the operating budget, and it may be worth a discussion at some point, I don't remember, but I feel very comfortable to have something in the 3% to 5% range, or a couple of hundred thousand or set a goal. And if you ever use it, you can replenish it the next year, and if you don't use it, you don't have to continue to fund it and have that, you know, reserve grow, but it makes me comfortable, it gives you guys flexibility to handle issues when they come up, and not say, I can't touch this, 'cause it's promised to a truck in the third year or the fourth year or something.
So money is fungible within that own, its own capital reserve fund, and not every capital reserve, capital improvement plan is marked urgent. So there are some that are nice to have, some that are, like, they're all marked with different priorities, so when you, when something hits the fan, and you're like, oh, no, we need to spend this now out of a capital, a capital reserve fund, you look at your, like, not urgent capital improvement plans and reallocate resources within that fund as long as it's designed for that fund.
You may have it there, okay? Because unfortunately, the state law in New Hampshire, as best as I understand it, says you have to have a separate fund for any idea you have. You can't have something called, this is my capital reserve emergency fund. Maybe you can set up something like that, okay? But you can't use funds from the library to handle...
Someone recommended one.
Okay.
So, I just have one other point that's outside of this, that, or it's within the capital, and then other people can talk. So we're putting 50,000 into building improvement, capital reserve? Where is the building improvement, capital improvement plan in our packet?
There's, in the CIP, there's three projects that comes under the public works department. The first is completion of the fire station, second floor, completion of the roof replacement at the public works facility, and the third is looking at our HVAC systems and determining what needs to be done for upgrades, and then moving forward with repairs included in that, or repairs to the system here at Town Hall at the recreation center. So on my report, if you'd like me to show you, there they are in the table, I'd be happy to give you the page number. Okay, the first one, which is, let's say, the roof is on page seven, the completion of the second floor of the fire station is on page eight, and the HVAC upgrades is on page nine.
So these come out of building improvements, not out of public works, even though it's listed as public work?
It's under public works.
Right, but building improvements is a subdivision of public works department, buildings and grounds.
Okay. But I guess, I would request that, and I guess it doesn't feel immaterial to me, that the table of contents is listed by capital reserve fund as opposed to department, so that we can see, like, what line is coming out of, in, in our packet? It's listed by department, but I, like, I would've assumed those are all coming out of the 495.
Recommendations on the spreadsheet, too.
Right, but I know what you're saying. But you're saying by fund.
Yeah, it's just looking to me, like, when I looked at that, I assumed it was all coming from the 495 and the public works capital reserve fund, not out of the two...
Well, it is part of the public works department.
Well, this, there's two different things, no, wait, there's two different things we're talking about here. The division of departments, buildings and grounds, falls under the division of departments of public works. You're asking for a table of contents by fund.
I totally agree, 'cause the fund is all that really matters. Departments are immaterial, the, what fund it's coming out of is what actually matters.
It's, it's just an editorial thing, it's not a...
If you look at my overall spreadsheet, it shows how by department those funds are categorized.
There is a separate thing there, though, it says public works, somewhere beneath it, I think it says building improvement, CRF, so it is segmented on the spreadsheet.
So what is the 80,000 going into for public works?
I reduced it...
You, I know, but what's it going to?
My recommendation is the HVAC, I didn't think the priority was up to the second floor of the fire station or the public works.
No, we're putting 50,000 into building improvement and 80,000 into public work.
Oh, public works of vehicles, I'm sorry. Vehicles of, yeah.
And the priority status of all these...
So they're, I'm sorry.
We indicated the department's priority status on the individual forms.
Right, put on, on.
Yeah, and then in the column, we put what the CIP...
Necessary, urgent.
Right, and the, U is urgent and is necessary, D is either desirable or deferrable, and there's two different categories, D4 and D3, and that's what that system represents.
Vehicle on these...
So the department's rated them, and then the CIP's...
Counselor Weinstein?
All right, so I have a couple of questions. So my first is just on the, on the budget document. So for 2017, the numbers should be...
Exactly, 575,115.
Okay. And then last year, so that was one question, 'cause they're all over the map, right? So 80 and then 130 and, okay. But last year, so this says that we put 75 into the McAllen Dam?
We did.
We did last year.
We did. As of July 1st, a transfer was made from the general fund to the capital reserve funds of $75,000.
So we increased it last year from the, okay?
We did.
But then it says actual is 50.
That's the error, that's the error, that was need.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
Yes. Everything, again, everything in that original...
Right.
Has to by law be transferred to that second column. Don't look at the actual, I hate to say this on that one.
No, I understand. And I do, and I vaguely remember us adding to the McAllen Dam last year, thinking that we were gonna, maybe that there was a study that, or engineering...
We were gonna do more engineering this year.
Yeah, engineering. So then I wanna back up and go to the building improvements question again, and that is, what projects do we anticipate doing for sure in the fiscal year of 18? that is, what projects do we anticipate doing for sure in the fiscal year of 18?
We need to start saving money for HVAC improvements in this building and, and rec and, and the police department, okay? The, the, the priority, however, is going to be in the recreation department because there's actually a furnace there, I'm sorry, a unit there that is undersized for the square footage that it's servicing, and it, it is starting to fail. So that has to go. And then beyond that, it's going to be improvements to this building for heating and air conditioning because it just, we need to have someone come in, do a study, help us come up with efficiencies for heating and air conditioning. I think this building alone is going to be about $150,000.
For the study?
So you think-
For the work.
Oh.
Just for clarification, which is it?
For the, for the, just the system.
Study or actual work?
Well, we gotta do a study before we-
How much is 150 going to?
150 is going to HVAC systems that-
Oh, okay.
Okay, the actual work, not the study.
Not the study.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for. It sounded like it was a study and I'm like, $150,000 for a study gave me high expectations.
But Tony, if you're connecting the dots-
Mm-hmm, I'm trying.
I appreciate, we're not allowed, the CIP committee, what do money goes into, what reason? I don't know if also has a list of what we plan and goes through that, but-
And that's what I'm looking-
The CIP committee of what will actually be spent on what budget.
Your CIP reflects the, the list of what the committee recommends.
For what?
Right. I say, look, I can't afford that.
Right, I completely understand that.
So I only, and you're right, I don't, I don't say the 50 grand is going to go to XYZ.
Right.
I say I only can put 50 grand in, hopefully this gets me through.
No, I completely understand that. What I'm asking is what projects do we anticipate doing? So, so it's just HVAC, is that-
Or two, which is, you're asking, but what are we actually going to do next year?
Exactly.
My hope would be HVAC.
Okay.
CIP was a lot of discussion.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Counselor Azaro?
Sorry to keep hammering CIP, but this is, I think it's important. Why are we prioritizing HVAC when the other building and grounds thing here, the 4,000 square foot roof on the DPW that it says it's leaking and damaging the interior of the building is not being prioritized?
Because that's their priority, my priority is not. It's the town administrator's priority that goes in the budget.
So is that causing damage that's costing us money?
We're looking at a different alternative to fix it from what they recommended.
Okay. Their, so you said you put 80,000 in for their vehicles?
I'm recommending that, correct.
Their vehicle spreadsheet makes literally no sense to me. I don't even see like a total number for like how much they're asking to be contributed. Well, it looks like 219,000 dollars.
That's correct.
What, what, what are you looking at? Page six of the capital improvement packet. Because they want to purchase out of capital improvement in one year an excavator with like no contributions, having gone to that before?
I did that excavator was going to be purchased by lease, but I could be willing to keep it.
Then, and again, that's-
The mini excavator? Yeah. Its cost is 55,000 and they want to contribute 55,000 and then withdraw 55,000 in the same year.
Yeah.
That's not a capital improvement plan, that's an operating budget.
And that's why I did not do 219,000. I looked at what the odds are will be the payments and said 80 is, level funding is fine because that's what we've been doing and surviving with that to replace vehicles.
So we're having a lease purchase in the capital improvement-
The problem with what the, the vehicle capital improvement plan for the public works is, you put in 55, you withdraw 55, that's not a capital improvement plan, that's an operating budget. You should be saying five grand, five grand, five, or 11 grand, 11 grand, 11 grand over five years, and in five, year five, you withdraw 55.
Where they are in other places, but just not there. And, I mean, this is even out of date, it lists like a replacement year is 2014, 15 for one of the vehicles, number 1838 bucket truck.
Well, yeah, but they'll extend the useful life if they can and not spend the money-
So is that, okay.
And actually, the bucket truck has been replaced. Replaced it last year.
Yeah, so this is-
Yeah, so it is replaced.
Counselor Thompson.
I wonder if we can do something allocation wise, Steve, we talked about reducing the McAllen Dam line item to 50,000.
Yep.
I would also propose reducing storm water management to 50,000, for instance.
What's that?
Taking the two 25,000s, adding up to 50,000 and adding 50,000 into roadway improvements. And then, public works dropping that from 80 to 50. So it's a net decrease in that whole section of 30,000.
Do we have a storm water management statement?
I do, I just closed my, I was sort of like, sort of like-
Fifty-two.
Non-point source solution?
Is it anything?
I don't have, I don't, I have the same document.
It's on page 10 and 11.
Okay.
Report. There's two projects, one is beach street extension right up here. Underwood Engineers is under contract currently looking at the costs associated with making those improvements.
They get in the estimate, so do those.
Government estimate, industry preliminary.
Again, I'm not saying it totally has to come out of everything, but I think going into roads, I think, I think the roads is important, that's been tough for us. I'm not convinced that the 80,000 is, is a really good number, but I think there is enough from what Counselor Pike said in McAllen Dam, storm water, those sort of things that, again, it's still, other than 30 grand, which is the net that I'm asking to cut out of here. I think it's still, and it can be moved around as we need to. I'd like to see that down by 30,000, and those are just my suggestions about where it could be moved in and out of. But I think the more paving we can get done, the sooner, I, I'd really like to see that.
Matt, I'm going to offer one too. If we went down to 7,500 for compensated absences.
You would have to delay hiring if you had retirement. You can do it.
What do you mean by delay hiring?
So say, say we had an officer retire and we weren't able, and, and we weren't able to cover their compensated absences fully.
I see, yeah.
We would have to delay the hiring for a couple of months.
So that you could-
Yeah, I see, I can see-
Up what you would have paid in salary toward repaying the retirement.
I'm looking at the names, I can see that, okay, yeah.
I mean, completely doable, okay? So-
But if we could also-
So I guess what I'm saying is, once you get to this bottom line, take the 590, 115 and drop that by 30K.
Yep.
And, and I mentioned my suggestions on where that could happen. I don't have a problem with anything else to revest and all of, all of that stuff.
Just to, to do the poll of the council on this one. It's a reduction of 25,000 from storm, reduction of 20,000 from MAC, which is the recommendation from MAC. Add that 50 to roads and a reduction of DPW vehicles by 30.
Can I ask a question related to that? Is, is, on the storm water management, is, when, when do you think we're going to have to start spending bigger money on that? How far off again because you-
Every year they push it back.
And they keep pushing the deadline back. Last I heard, it was the end of this year, and Steve has heard-
It's been pushed back again.
It may be later than that. One of the first tasks, we'll have a year to be, to get ready, if you will, before we need to have a plan in place. But the first step is to do a comprehensive storm water management plan.
This is wrong.
I think that would, you know, be a pretty costly item. And so I would say that not at the beginning of next fiscal year, but the following year, we may be in a position where we need to have funding to be able to do this.
So we may, 50 may be okay this year, but 75 might be what we need when we get to that point.
What it is, is basically, they're not going to come and tell New Hampshire to do their MS4, that's what it's called, storm water management's MS4, until Massachusetts is first settled. And there's, was supposed to be settled in December, and it's not going to be settled in December. They keep getting pushed back.
Do you have funds there? I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we, we can get through.
Okay, okay.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, that's good.
When you say pretty costly for the study, like what, ballpark?
I wouldn't-
Last I knew-
...venture to say, but I would say to do an overall plan for the entire town, which includes mapping all your storm water facilities and-
The number we were told was about 200,000.
$200,000 probably.
That's what I was-
Did you and H, like, they did the road plan for us, is there a similar vehicle to whatever it was, T squared or something that-
No, but the problem is right now is there are so many organizations, lack of a better term, trying to get this money from all the municipalities, that these, all these groups are forming, oh, we're going to help the MS4. But none of them are getting together to do it as one group. But you, that's the thing about UNH with that one, they said, yes, we'll do it for roads. Nobody's saying it for this yet. And we're trying, and municipalities are trying to get somebody to say, do it. But this just isn't anybody.
So will you go through again?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We're reducing the two, storm water and McAllen by 25. That 25 will be added to roads. So that will go up to 175. We're going to reduce DPW vehicles, public works contribution to 50,000 from 80.
I'm not against it, but I just, what, what impact does that have? Does it have anything for this?
We'll be fine.
Okay.
I can, I have, I can live with that.
Can I ask a long way question?
Sure.
No offense to anybody, and I don't know who's on first, but 108, we know what's happening on 108.
That's not ours.
I understand. And it's still, they haven't repaved it, and there's a sign up that says they're closing the bridge on 10/24, and they wrote.
Yep.
So there's like, the way I was telling you. Okay, I was kind of hoping the-
Packers Falls.
Down on 108.
Yeah, now, and that's the state, yeah. We actually have no control over either because the bridge isn't ours either. That's Durham.
Durham's doing the bridge.
Right, well, the state doesn't want away.
It's doing this, and-
And we get to sit back and deal with it, right.
They've got to be close to dawn.
I thought once.
Wait, trust, last night when I got a text that the 108 was washed out, I panicked at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, that was fun.
So.
The 108?
The 108.
Between that and the bowl, it was a fun night.
Yeah.
Are you polling us?
Yeah.
I'm trying.
Is there any other reductions, but we can do this one package if you want.
What's moving stuff to?
My other one would be, I'm looking at compensated absences.
No.
I could, I, I'd bump it down to 10. Originally we're saying 750. I, I looked at the list of who could retire. I've got, that's my concern. I don't want somebody to come in with a surprise and-
I'm okay with that, I think, in that case, and it doesn't come out very often, but-
Counselor Weinstein.
I just think the idea of not, of having to delay hiring a, a police officer is scary to me.
Yeah, but I think I could live with not cutting it in half, but reducing it to 10.
I'm going to look a gift course in the map. Like, I, I think there's enough to move around with, hopefully, sorry.
I just can't functionally say pulling 30,000 from the DPW vehicles makes sense because the plan does not make any sense to me right now. Like, when I look at their vehicle plan.
This?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My suggestion is that then this could be the carrot to get it there. I don't think there's a need.
I don't want a hamstring that-
No, no, I don't believe, I don't believe there's going to be a hamstring for vehicle. Worst case scenario, we could always do a lease until such time. Thing has her handle.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On behalf of the chairman, who's not here today, and called to say she was sick and couldn't make it, but she had a couple of questions and I wanted to get some clarification. On the recreation facilities, the town administrator is recommending 18,666, what does that represent in the way of projects do you do?
That is just to contribute to go towards the replacement, the splash pad replacement of equipment that, that's in there. Is it funding at 100%? No, it's level funding. I mean, that's, that's one thing I think everybody's going to understand, my, when I get it, I have to look at level funding because I know that's what ultimately the council's going to look for.
And the second question you have is about the library. What, how old do you-
I'm waiting.
Let's just have-
Going back to all these couple of years, we made the change in the rent department, which I think is great, that they did an enterprise, probably in session and salaries to run the program. Should they be thinking that if they break even or make money over the cost of the program, which is the enterprise for the concept, right, that the program should be equal to the revenue, that they generate their own capital contribution?
That, yeah, and that was discussed this morning.
We had that conversation already.
Yeah, so yes, that was actually, just-
I'm sorry, I missed.
That's okay. Just started with making quicker, yes, we already had that conversation.
Okay. I like to think of this really self-like.
Yep.
Just like the trash, which I-
Well, I know, you bring it in.
The second question that Mrs. Fox had was-
Calling the wreck trash.
Was the library, they, the CIP committee recommended funding in the amount of 27,000 for pedestrian enhancements, interior painting, lighting retrofits and roofing repairs, and that was reduced to zero, and I guess we wanted to understand the rationale behind that.
Okay, the-
Library?
There's, there's two things going on. The first one is, it's based upon the capital reserve numbers that I created, which was before the CIP plan came out. The second one is, is the library is capable of contributing towards some of their projects?
They have their own capital reserve funds.
Well, they have a trust fund.
They have a trust fund and capital reserve.
Which I was sort of told they blew out almost all of it last year.
That, what they, what they held, what the town holds, no, no, what the town holds, they, they pretty much consumed.
They have about $150,000 in their own funds.
Oh, they consumed our capital fund, not their trust fund?
No, the excess they had, again, we talked about this earlier, the excess that they held in balance, which is something that only the library can do.
Right. The, the town is holding a portion and the library is holding a portion of, of what they did not spend over the length of the library, okay? What the library is holding is what they call the trust.
And you're the only one trying to pre-spend it.
Right, so, but they, they've spent down what the town is holding.
Matt, that's a, we can have this conversation after.
Yeah.
Back to the council polling.
All right, thank you.
25 storm management reduction, 25 MAC well reduction, add those to 50 grand to roads, reduction of DPW by 30, reduction of compensated absences by 5. You'll have a new budget as council proposed of 505,115, a reduction of capital reserve contributions of 1.53% over the previous year.
I'm finding that.
Okay. But he not find it?
Looks like Counselor Pike has-
It was fast for me.
There's a reason.
Would you say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Reduction of storm water by 25, reduction of MAC by 25, add that 50 to roads, so roads are now 175. Actually, I take that back, I got to give you a different figure because I forgot to add.
And then take-
It's even, Stephen.
Yeah, it's about even, it's, um, sorry, it's 175 there. We reduce DPW by 30 and reduce compensated by absences, it's 555, 115. So it's a reduction over last year.
About 20,000 bucks.
Yeah. The formulas aren't, Matt.
Reduction by 30.
Matt.
Reduction of 35,000.
Yeah.
DPW is 35.
DPW is now 50.
Matt, no, it's a reduction of 20,000.
Roads are now 175.
You're reducing, you're moving from MAC well and-
Public works is down to 50.
Compensation is now 10. Each of those. Public works is- It's down to 50, yeah.
The compensated absentee was 570.
This is up 50,000.
To 10.
That's down 25 each.
Down to 10.
So they're 50 and after 50.
You're reducing it by five.
And this one's 10.
So you have 30,000, 5,000 is 35,000.
That's the compensation.
Okay. Right, but over, but over the budget from budget, it's a reduction of 20,000.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a reduction from last year's budget of 20,000.
Okay.
Is everybody clear?
Yeah. Any changes there? Okay. That's capital reserve?
I have, I have a point that I need to make.
Thank you very much.
So-
Thank you.
Wait, wait, wait.
So like, you look at technology and it has the security system for this building, but the balance that it has in there is the balance against building improvements. So I just really, really, really would love to see, like, each capital reserve fund, like, what plans are against it and the plan, you really, as the administrator, looking at and saying, okay, these are the plans that are submitted to me, but here are the town's capital improvement plan. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like, we could have one plan that's like, the departments all came with a bunch of stuff, the committee said, here's what we think you should put together, and you say, okay, here's what I'm taking, and this is the plan that is against each fund. Because I think what we're given right now is just so many different plans against the Because I think what we're given right now is just so many different plans against the same funds that it's like hard to like, like to see where that two-hundred-and-ten is being parsed against. It's, the other thing I would say is I would love to, at a minimum, see, like each department puts the prioritization. I would love if the committee then said, this is what the department said, but this is what the committee thinks the prioritization should be.
You got that on the overall spreadsheet.
On the big spreadsheet, okay. But, and I would love to see the town administrator, public council, what he thinks the prioritization needs to be.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what.
Which he does by changing the budget, but I never see it actually in the plan. Thank you.
So, okay, done capital reserve funds?
Thank you very much.
We're gonna hammer out some of the smaller ones. So we're on conservation commission, which is page thirty-six. It's level funded at two-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-one dollars. Any change? Economic development, the next page, is level funded at twenty-five-hundred dollars. No change. Debt service, you can't change it. It's a reduction of, to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. So you have to do that. I got a conundrum with IT. He, he's maintaining the camera. Matt, can you address IT?
I can try.
He's actually running the camera.
Oh, oh, oh.
It was a.
Does it, there is an increase in IT. That's why I wanna make sure we, a forty-five.
Put him on speaker. All right, in IT, the, the largest jump that you're gonna find there is gonna be in the software maintenance line item. Under, under the department head's disposal, it's maintaining two separate software systems at the same time, okay? What, what the town administrator proposed was to maintain only one system, so.
Explain the system.
What are the two systems?
So basically, right now, we.
They don't understand what system you're talking about.
This is the financial system.
Thank you.
So right now, we have a system called Muni, Muni Smart, and then we're looking to buy another system that can offer more services to the taxpayers, to the departments, okay? That actually, we would maintain the new system, but not the old system. And we may be on the old system for six months.
Okay, so phase out.
Yeah.
All right, as everybody knows, we need to get off Muni Smart. They're no longer.
Supporting.
Supporting it. They're no longer maintain, maintaining it.
Not enhancing it.
Same, same. So we need to do this. So that's why we're putting the money in to start doing it in eighteen.
And a lot of other towns like Newmarket are starting to digit. So we may be the last one standing with it.
So that's, any changes in IT?
Salaries?
Salaries?
Is it one, one person, two people?
One and a half. One person in IT is the director and the channel thirteen producer.
Thank you. Well, you have channel thirteen, part-time salary.
So on, on this, if, if, you know, by eighteen, is there any chance, what would be the impact if we started to integrate more with the school on IT?
I think we'd, I mean, we'd still need to keep the staffing at the level we have. I don't think there'd be any savings.
There's no, it'd just be a coordination.
Yeah, I mean, if anything from them, our report, they're stating we're understaffed there.
Yeah, okay. But you're not gonna, if we're understaffed, we, we won't be addressing that until some future day.
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to wait. But, I mean, I think if we, if we were to combine the departments, you solve a staffing problem because you're got to. We double our staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna go back to finance and human resources? If that, if we do those two, then the remaining are just the public works.
Are we approving IT?
That's, I thought we were.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna go back to finances on page twenty-eight? The major saving, is this, it's an estimate, again, the council has not approved, but I put it in there, would be if we were to contract services with the school department using the formula that we recommend, that we recommended of about sixty, sixty, forty, you know, around there. There would be a reduction in the full-time salaries, which is going right now to the contracted service. So we would see a reduction there.
About thirty-five thousand, thirty.
Yeah, it is.
I calculated it. It's about thirty-five thousand. We can take off that if it goes as planned, so that's good.
And then the additional money though, is the first payment of the lease for the financial system, software. So, because that's what we'd be recommending is to lease the software and we're estimating at fifty-four thousand. I, the eighty-four was, you wanna explain?
We can either get the Cadillac system at eighty-four thousand or parse it up and get kind of a dumbed-down collection system for fifty-four thousand.
I didn't wanna go get everything the first year. I wanna see what we could use for modules, get the base, get what we need, then add on later. So we can see what we can do.
And it's less money.
Counselor Weinstein.
And this is a system that the school can also utilize.
Exactly.
Yes.
And it's an estimate. We may go with a different one. It may be less, but we have to estimate what it is.
So is the fifty-four per-rated as well or would need to be?
No, this is our share of it because we would, we would need our own at this point in time.
Licensing?
Yeah. Any questions on finance? Human resources. We're seeing a seven-point-seven-eight percent increase. The major portion is health insurance at twelve-point-six-nine percent. Again, I, as I said, I increased, proposed a ten percent increase. We got our guaranteed maximum rate increase at ten-point-nine. Knock on wood under here. Usually it comes in lower. The only reason why it's not ten-point-nine straight on is because there's been changes in what people may take. May go from a single to two-person or a family. So that's the estimate there. Workers' comp, we were told it's a ten, about a ten percent pay, uh, increase in the rates. Retirement, we know there's gonna be a, they've already come up with their new rates. So we know that that's gonna be increased as well. Just so everybody know, retirement changes their rates every two years. So the, and this is the year.
There's just not a lot you can do.
Counselor Mizrahi.
Why is property liability insurance going up? But it seems like it's been pretty steady state in actuals the last couple of years.
I don't have an actual increase, so I, I have to estimate what the, the increase is gonna be and I estimated it at eight percent. If you go back to sixteen, we underbudgeted by four thousand and seventeen.
There's also a market situation on this one. This will be the first year that there's no competition for priming and they'll be, they'll be basically accepting all municipalities. So what they would do would pick and choose who they would insure.
But eight percent on actuals is a hundred-one thousand and change. You did eight percent on budget.
How are these numbers the same?
Your actual, you get, Matt, your actual for nineteen, seventeen is ninety-three eight-four-five.
I did eight percent of a hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, less library water and sewer.
Where's the hundred-and-twenty-one?
It's less, less library water and sewer. They pay their own insurance.
Say that one more time.
One-hundred-and-twenty-one is.
Is what?
The overall.
Overall, including water, sewer and library.
One-twenty-one.
Back out those three. It's one-ten. So he.
What's the ninety-three eight-four-five?
The ninety-three eight-four-five is what was actually charged to the general fund.
Right. So why would we not just, if you're increasing eight percent, why would you not just increase that eight percent to give you a hundred-and-one?
We could certainly do that. That would work.
What's the number?
Um, let's see.
A hundred-and-one-three-eight-five percent.
So it would be a hundred-and-one-three-fifty-three.
Just do a hundred-and-one thousand, so reduction of nine. Anybody have an issue with that? Okay. That's again, that's one that if it doesn't come in, we have, you know, we gotta do it anyway, so. Any other changes in HR? So, the next question is, we have public, we just have to wrap up the remainder.
Before our next meeting.
Before our next, you wanna do it at six o'clock before the next meeting, an hour?
Maybe an hour and fifty.
First meeting in November?
Yeah.
I'll be out of the country for work.
The other option would be coming in Wednesday night.
That's okay. I mean, you can do it without me.
No, Phil can do it. It's good.
I guess.
I mean, I think it doesn't make more sense. We're fighting not to be here.
No, no, I think, I think that's better. Do it Wednesday. Let's, everybody go with Wednesday?
Wednesday night, we can even start at six?
Seven.
We'll do seven. Oh, Trey, you gotta come in.
I have a conflict with Wednesday night.
My concern for, is one of the discussions will be the facilities director. So is an hour enough before the next meeting? So we have to do it Wednesday.
You have to do it this Wednesday?
Even though it's gonna be down to two counselors?
If not, we have to pick another night.
If it, if it has to be this Wednesday, I can change my plan. I mean, I, I'll miss something, but it's okay. You know, that, I would put this as a higher priority if it needs to be Wednesday.
Yes.
I have a.
If not, you have to come back the ninth for a special meeting to adopt your budget.
The what?
The ninth of November.
Which is the. Athletic Association Day.
The next one's after. The regular meeting.
The ninth, the day after the election.
Is that just gonna be a pro forma thing? I mean, that's just gonna be a root.
Unless, I, I don't know. You guys may change things.
Uh, I mean, I think we do that.
But again, even doing so, the second of November, it's gonna be a business meeting. You're running it to a business meeting. We could do a different night. We can do a Tuesday or I need.
But there's another, there's another Saturday, which means it is wickedly bad for me.
No, yeah.
I'm the only one to miss Saturday and Mr. Malaski can be here. I'm, you know, I have faith in you guys.
I can't be Saturday.
Does twenty-six work for anyone or no?
I, I thought everybody said that twenty-six was working except for one.
I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't.
Except, yeah.
I said, well, I can, I'll, I'll have someone else step in for me.
Twenty.
Can I ask you a question? What else do we have going on on the second that we couldn't just change our meeting to a workshop?
You have a bunch of resolutions you have to adopt. What was the other?
We already used it like an hour long. You know, if we came in at six.
I'm sorry, Matt. You have, there's some purchases you have to make?
Yeah.
You just said you were away, didn't you?
Early.
But it looks like no matter what we do, we're gonna have.
Hold on, let me figure out. Who, let me ask this and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it bluntly. Is the twenty-six, if something you can't change, like is it a doctor's appointment or something like that, that you can't be here Wednesday? Because I mean, the budget is, we have to adopt it by the fifteenth. There's no if and or buts. That's the law.
Mine is leadership or NYA, but I can have someone else fill in.
So I'm the only one that can't make that, so it's fine.
So Wednesday looks like the best. Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Okay. Beautiful. Actually, she's, she checked my wire first.
I hate to do it.
Yeah. Do I have a motion? Are we done?
Yep.
Motion returned?
No move.
Yes, please.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.